I'll call to order the January tenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. All councillors are present. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor O'Halloran.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, if you can hear me through double mask, another item on the agenda to deal with an emergency repair for the highway department on a truck.
We have a motion in second to add an item. All in favor. Unanimous. We will make that item eighteen and then move all the other items down. Thank you. All right, rules of order. The council operates from Robert's Rules of Order and any other rules that are adopted at the annual organizational meeting. Item four, adoption of the minutes from the following meeting, the twelve-twenty-twenty-one meeting.
Move the table, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the table. Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. The only thing I have to report tonight is just to let the public know that City Hall will be closed on Monday, the seventeenth, in observation of the holiday. So make sure you get your business done, other than on Monday. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions? Item six, committee reports. Any councillors attend any committee meetings?
Yep. So I, last week, the library funding committee met on the fourth, and the main purpose of the meeting was to discuss how to address the funding gap created by the city council, reducing its appropriation to the library by a hundred thousand dollars per year for the past two years. So that means we, the city council, have cut the funding for the public library by twenty percent in the last two years. So the cut has meant the library has had to cut back on hours and on services. For example, the library used to be open some evening hours, and it's not anymore. So my understanding, I think, is that the city council was hoping that outlying communities, whose constituents use the library, would increase their funding of the library to make up for that loss. But the outlying towns have not been forthcoming with money. So of approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars requested from surrounding towns, only about eighteen thousand has been received or approved. One way that the library has tried to address the lack of surrounding town support is by charging patrons thirty dollars a year for a library card. Unfortunately, that's meant that many previous cardholders have decided not to renew their library cards. And then one other sort of piece of data is that the library did do a survey of patrons who don't live in Ellsworth, and seventy percent of them say that when they come into the library, they shop at other venues or restaurants. So we spent the meeting discussing options for increasing outside funding, including looking into state funding options, county funding options, continuing to try to encourage collaboration for our surrounding communities. So of course, we're going to discuss funding of the library when we get into budgeting discussions in the spring. My personal opinion from the meeting is that it's a shame that the library has had to cut its services. Trying to squeeze money out of outlying communities doesn't seem to be a viable option, and so far, it seems to be alienating people who come into the library and then spend money at other venues in Ellsworth. So charging for library cards will just push those people to go to other towns to use their library and shop in their stores and restaurants. But that's just me. So that's my report.
I guess I have one question that, for the committee, if you don't mind taking it back, is, I don't know about other councillors, but I've received zero emails correspondence from anyone saying that the changes in the hours have been a burden on the community. And so I would like to know exactly what information they have that suggests that that has been something that has been unacceptable for the patrons of the library, because that's useful information. I personally haven't received anything, so that's why I'm asking that question. And then the other question that I would have is, the decision to change hours, did they consider other cost-cutting measures besides just cutting hours of operations? And so I'd just like some more context behind what has taken place so that the public can hear it as well, because it makes it sound like those changes have been, created a lot of hardships, and I just haven't seen any of that.
Sounds good. And I just mentioned that was one of the cost-cutting measures, because I didn't want to go on and on about all the things that they've tried and done. And again, I think we can talk about that more in the budget meeting time. To me, that was the biggest one that I have noticed. And when I was campaigning and knocking on doors and people were talking to me about the library, that was the one that constituents brought up to me. So that was why I focused on that. There are certainly other things that they're trying to do to increase funding and decrease costs.
Councillor Blanchett.
Mr. Chairman, to say that the council created a funding gap is a farce right from the get-go, and it isn't fair. We were told by the library staff that they would go to outlying towns and get the difference. And because of COVID and apparently other reasons, they did not do this with all of the towns. The Ellsworth taxpayer, if I remember the numbers, were paying seventy-eight dollars a head per taxpayer to fund the library, and they were charging the out-of-town residents twenty dollars a head, which is very, very unfair to the taxpayer. And for them to tell the new councillor that it's the council's fault that there was a funding gap is... I'll sit with the word unfair. I'll be polite.
Okay. They certainly didn't tell me that. That was just what I gleaned from the information that they gave me regarding how much the city, the degree, the percentage of the total library budget that the city has agreed to fund since two thousand and four. So it was just a number that I could see. It wasn't any kind of agenda that they had.
Councillor Caplan.
From the meeting that I attended, basically, they've looked at all possible options as far as cost-cutting, even so far as utilizing students, for example, who are required to do twenty hours of community service per year. Or before they can graduate, they're required to do a certain number of hours of community service and perhaps utilizing some students in the library that take an interest in books and can help put away books and things like that. They were looking at doing that as a cost-cutting measure. They did have some funding activities. You had an online auction, for example. They're looking at all possible options as far as keeping the library functioning. And although it's not budget season, I personally, although I don't, I don't attend the library regularly. I did get my first library card. But I've always found it a source of pride, that building right there, in that painting. It's there for a reason, because that's a source of pride for Ellsworth. And so I think that, given that the library is going to be functioning at a certain budget rate, whether out-of-towners use it or not, they're still going to have to heat the place. They're still going to have maintenance and repairs. They're still going to have a certain amount of labor cost, whether somebody from Mariahville contributes in a library card or not. There's going to be baseline costs. And so balancing that all together while still being fair to the Ellsworth taxpayer is the big kerfuffle that they're having. So it's a work in progress. And we continue to work together.
Councillor O'Halloran.
I have two questions. The first one is, why isn't it part of the school department? And the second is, why is everyone so down on the library with all the money that's being spent in this town?
I wasn't aware that everyone's down on the library.
It seems that they're always in trouble. And it seems that there is a negative feel about the library here, and I don't understand. It seems that, you know, I'm one that doesn't want to spend money. I'll be the first to admit. But it seems that it would be a good fit for the school department. They'd get away with murder. And number two, why are we so down on the library? It's a good fit for the school department. It's education, is it not? Isn't it part of our educational system? Couldn't it be integrated better if it was part of the school department? They'd be great at funding it.
So we can certainly, you can bring that to the budgeting.
I'm just asking. I'm asking.
And just for the record, because I don't want you putting words in my mouth, I've said from the very beginning, I am a proponent of the library. Funding is separate, and so that's how I've separated. And I'm not going to rehash all the points I've made in the past. And this is why I've asked the question, is in advance of the budgeting meeting, I would like just information in terms of what has been the impact of reducing hours. And if the hour reduction isn't generating a significant problem for the community, that's good information to have. If, however, it's a significant problem and there's evidence to show that, that's good information, too. So that's why I raised it. It's not about being down on the library. The budgeting decisions that I voted on in the past were made in terms of context of what I felt were appropriate, not that I'm down on the library. So I just don't want that view to be attributed to me. Councillor Caplan.
I haven't personally received any emails of people being impacted, but I'm certain that, yeah, one of our librarians who's here tonight might be able to tell us if there are complaints about the reduced hours.
And that's what I'm asking for, so when we go forward with the budget.
Yeah, so we can bring, that's a good thing to bring back once we start talking about it in the budgeting. Sounds good. Yep.
All right. Other committees. So as far as follow-up for the appointment to the Frenchman's Bay Regional Shelffish Municipal Joint Board, there are two appointments with that. There are two kind of parallel groups. The first one is for a representative from the council, so Councillor Lyons has agreed to participate on that board. And on the Frenchman Bay Regional Shelffish Conservation, we are appointing Kathy Picard to represent Ellsworth on that group. Anything else with committees? Item seven, citizens' comments. This is the point of the agenda where any citizen can speak on any topic. If it's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. But if it isn't, and you'd like to address an issue, please step forward, say your name, and feel free to speak.
Good evening. My name is Cara Romano. I'm the executive director of Heart of Ellsworth, our downtown organization. This past month, in December, we launched a new program called Love Your Downtown. And the basic concept was that we purchased twenty-five-dollar gift cards from twenty-five participating downtown businesses. And we created bags that had a bunch of Heart of Ellsworth merchandise in there, also some other merchandise from other area businesses that sponsor Heart of Ellsworth events. We brought each of the bags to the downtown businesses that chose to participate, and then we did an online social media campaign, sort of in a way, kind of raffling them off through comments and likes of the different shops that were participating. Much to our surprise, it ended up being one of our most successful campaigns, marketing campaigns of the year. Some of the program goals were to create the buzz around downtown during the holiday shopping season, of course, to support businesses, instill pride in our community, and to further brand the downtown area of our city. Some of the things that we did throughout the campaign is we collected in a spreadsheet a lot of the comments that were coming through social media, whether it be on Instagram or Facebook. And we took select comments that were on certain posts, and we'll be sharing them via email with the business owner so that the business owner can use those comments for their own marketing campaigns on social media website, their Google listing, rack cards, or anything, anything like that. So the overall program budget was one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, along with six-plus volunteer hours from board members who helped get the word out and delivered and purchased gift certificates. The Ellsworth American did a really great article that didn't really necessarily mention this campaign, but the article was in last week's paper, and there's a link inside this report, and it will also be emailed to you folks, where it was sort of testimonials from a lot of the participating businesses that the Ellsworth American reached out to, and it was a pretty heartwarming article. And I think a hundred percent of the businesses that responded had favorable comments about their shopping season and how well it was and how much things were up for them numbers-wise over two thousand and twenty. And then we had some really lovely community quotes that really kind of, like I said, warmed our hearts and really was exciting to see how people feel about their downtown. And again, like, we didn't anticipate the amount of quotes and the nice things that people said. So some of the things that I'll share, one person said, Zoe Brown, "I love my downtown. Ellsworth is the best, one of the best communities I've ever lived in." Another one was really great. People were tying businesses together. "Airlines are a perfect place to grab a pint and a bite while pausing to shop at places like Rock and Art Shop and Trio. Proud of our downtown." And then the last one, the feeling, the welcoming feeling you get from each little shop you walk into, owners and staff describing the items they display with passion and attention. So there was a lot of feel-good. There were over, probably collectively, there were over a hundred comments throughout the entire month of the twenty-five different business listings, which there ended up being twenty-eight postings with our beginning post explaining everything to the community and then tying it up at the end. So are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
My name is Steve O'Halloran. I'm a citizen of Ellsworth. And I would like the board to know that last meeting, I spoke of my distaste and discord for the fight with businesses in town, and specifically the Walmart one. That seems to be the big hot spot. Before I spoke last time, in fairness, I went to our city assessor, Mr. Larry Gardner, because I wanted to try and learn more before I spoke on the subject. I was trying to get his point of view. And I was unsuccessful, and I was ordered out of his office. And I just thought this board should know that I was trying to get information before I spoke about this discord and fight with Walmart and other businesses. Mr. Gardner ordered me out of his office, and I complied. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Item eight, presentation of awards. She's not here. She's not here. So it's to recognize Katie Day for five years with the Ellsworth Police Department as a dispatcher, so we will either get her the award or bring her to the next meeting if she would like to attend. Thank you. Unfinished business. Consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion. There are no other, there are no items under the unfinished business, so we will move forward to new business. Item nine, public hearing in action on the application for issuance of the following business licenses. Jeff and Diane Kelly Locats, DBA eighty-six this, one twenty-five Main Street for renewal of a city class C vicueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant class three and four malt and minus liquor license. Everything's all set with the applications. So this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to speak on this, they may. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed, and I will open up to the council.
Move as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor. Unanimous. ETC LLC, DBA Dions, thirty-five Eastwood Lane, for renewal of a city class C vicueller and liquor license and renewal of a state restaurant class three and four malt and minus liquor license. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed, and I will open up to the council.
Move as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Unanimous. Item ten, presentation by the city attorney regarding executive sessions. This came up as a question by, as Councillor O'Halloran, we were talking about this one day, and we thought collectively that it would be good to provide some education in terms of what are executive sessions? Why do we, as a council and other boards, go into executive session for that educational purpose? So we appreciate the time this evening for that to happen.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor. So, Councillor Manchin, my name is Stephen Wagner. I'm with Ruben Winchell. We serve as city attorney, and here today just to have a general discussion about executive sessions, what they are, why the law provides for them, when they are appropriate, and those sort of things. So I hope to keep this to around twenty minutes. I'm happy to entertain any questions at any time, so feel free to interrupt me. I do have some materials for the council's benefit, and maybe there'll be something left over for the public. It is a executive session motion citations quick guide produced by Maine Municipal Association that I think is handy for helping craft the motions to enter into executive session. And then the second is just some sections of the Freedom of Access Act that are pertinent to executive sessions. So I think there are sort of three key takeaways to the topic of executive sessions. And that's, these are, an executive session is an exception that should be narrowly construed to the general rule under state law, the Freedom of Access Act, that public proceedings of bodies such as the council should be conducted publicly at meetings that are publicly noticed, which there's inadequate notice for them. The exceptions are in section four oh five of Title One. And so if you don't see an exception in four oh five that allows for the executive session, that specifically allows for, if you don't cleanly fall within that exception, then you should default to the general rule of meeting publicly. So that's the basic rule of executive sessions. Two other important parts. No action should be taken in an executive session. Executive sessions are merely for discussion amongst the council for the specific reasons that are articulated in section four oh five. And another takeaway is that you want to, as a council or as any public body, avoid what I would call accidental executive sessions, or, and not that I think this council did this, but an intentional evasion of the Freedom of Access Act by meeting in a way that has not been publicly noticed, and that's what we would call an illegal executive session. So those are really the main takeaways that I want to go over today. So in your pack, you would see section four oh one lays out the purpose of the Freedom of Access Act. And as the law court summarized, the basic purpose is to protect the public's right to obtain information about their government and government policies so that they may know what their government is doing and prevent mischief and arbitrary and self-serving government action. So when I say that we construe that general rule broadly, that things should be conducted publicly, this is the purpose that that law is trying to achieve. The law in section four oh one makes clear that that broad purpose should be liberally construed and applied to promote that general policy and purpose. And any of those exceptions to that, the reasons for meeting in executive session, should be narrowly construed. So as a practical standpoint, if I'm posed a question of can we do this in executive session, I think it's a close call. As a city attorney, I'm going to err on the side of recommending it be discussed publicly. So this applies to any public proceeding. That obviously covers council meetings. Basically, our rule of thumb is any meeting of councillors, three or more, even though that's short of a quorum because of the notice requirements. We would say any meeting of three or more should be done in a publicly noticed meeting. And that's any substantive discussion. So non-substantive discussions, such as what should we put on the agenda and things of that nature, that wouldn't be a legal executive session to have that discussion outside of a meeting. Now, there's obviously no question that the council is a public body, subject to the Freedom of Access Act, but this also covers committees or subcommittees of the council as well. So section four oh six, or I'm sorry, four oh five, subsection six, are the allowed exceptions. So this is what has to be cited in the motion to enter into an executive session. We need to fall under one of these exceptions to the general rule of public access. So first one here, four oh five six A, personnel matters. So happy to see on the agenda, this is number twenty-one, is exactly how you would want to phrase this. With the personnel exception, you don't want to specifically name the individual. Because again, the point of executive sessions is you have an exception for confidential reasons, because you don't want to expose sensitive matters that are not appropriate to discuss in public. So when you cite the personnel exception, you generally don't cite the name. This concerns employment, appointment, assignment duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation, or dismissal. I would suggest to you that is very broad language, and the courts have construed it very broadly. But you also have to make, that's only one part of the equation. You also, as a council, need to make a determination that public discussion would damage the person's reputation, or this is a situation where that person's right to privacy would be violated by discussion in public. So not only is it a personnel discussion, it's one that meets that standard. So you need to make sure both of those criteria are met. Additionally, a couple of points. The person, in a case of a dismissal or discussion of that nature, the person charged needs to be permitted to be present if they desire. They don't have to be. They may request, so long as it's in writing, for there to be a public session of any investigation or hearing of charges. I will say, I know some municipal attorneys have construed that to mean that so long as your personnel discussion is not about investigation or hearing of the charges, you can meet without the person being charged present. I take a more conservative approach, and really, if any of it has to do with a discipline or anything like that, you should construe the whole thing as part of an investigation, hearing of charges, and the individual being charged should be provided notice and a right to be present during those executive sessions. Any questions on that one? Okay. Second one, four oh five six C, and I'm just going to deal with what's pertinent to the council here, would be real estate and economic development negotiations. Again, you sort of have that two-part. It needs to be a real estate or economic development negotiation, and you have to determine that premature disclosure would hurt the municipality's competitive or bargaining position. So most commonly, you'll see this with discussions of tax increment financing, credit enhancement agreements, proposed real estate transactions. Broad, there's not a whole lot of case law on this. I haven't seen anybody sort of challenge a body's determination. But again, this is the exception to the rule, so I'd make sure you go through that analysis to determine if premature disclosure of what you're talking about could put the municipality at a disadvantage. at a disadvantage. Four five sixty, discussion of labor contacts, contracts and proposals. Nothing, I think that's relatively straightforward. The only part I'd flag is that, like personnel matters, these may be discussed in open session if the parties agree. My personal favorite, four five six E consultation with legal counsel. So, you can fall under this exception to discuss rights of the body, or pending or contemplated litigation, or settlement offers when premature disclosure of general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality at a substantial disadvantage. So, rights of the body is very broad, and the courts have interpreted that specifically to say that Freedom of Access Act was not designed to prevent a government body or agency from consulting privately with its legal counsel, though how to comply with the laws and regulations that govern the bodies or agencies work. Indeed, it may be wise for a citizen board to consult with knowledgeable counsel regarding the board's legal obligations and the potential consequences in preparing it. So, it is broad. That being said, I, I think when crafting the motion, it's important to clarify whether you're meeting because of litigation, or a settlement offer, or rights of the body, which would be a discussion of just generally, what, what are the duties for the council here? What is the issue before the council, and what options does the council have? So, in that executive session, when meeting with council, it's important that the council as a body doesn't discuss the substantive merits of the issue. If we, if we were meeting to discuss, say you were a board of appeals, and we were, we had an appeal of a zoning decision, I would perhaps outline the procedures, I'd outline some of the substantive issues, and I'd discuss how the event would go that night, and some potential risks to the, or of exposure to the city, and we can certainly entertain specific questions on that. But what I would draw the line at is any discussion amongst the council on the merits of the, or, in this case, the board of appeals, on the merits, because that needs to happen in public session. Case law has also clarified that multiple boards can meet jointly with council, that that's permitted under the law. Section, subsection F is allowed for confidential records discussion, so this is anything, this exception covers anything where the stat, any statute designates the information to discuss as confidential, you can then discuss it in executive session. I'd flag two things that commonly come up for councils would be poverty abatements and disability, disability variance applications. So, these are two things that they should be noted on the agenda, and again, in a non-identifying manner, but they should be discussed in executive session. And I also think that this exception can cover any, any discussions that would be subject to private confidentiality agreements, say proprietary information, or something of that sort, but those likely would also fall under either the council exception or the economic development. And at, at the risk of sounding like I'm getting in the weeds here, why this is important is whenever, whenever you go into executive session, you need to have a clear record of the reason why, and the specifically what is going to be discussed in executive session, and you have to have a specific record citation to the exact provision that gives you the authority to do that. So, although it'll often appear on your agenda, as staffs thought it through in advance, it's important that the council goes through this exercise to make sure that it is confident that it is legally authorized to go into that executive session. Last one here, four five six H is the Rule 80K, which is the main rule civil procedure that allows the city to prosecute land use violations. Specifically says consultations with the municipal officers and a CEO who is representing the municipality in district court on a land use prosecution. So, a conservative approach here is, given the way that this is phrased, if your CEO does the prosecutions, then this covers them. If they defer to the city attorney to do the prosecutions, I would recommend that you have the discussion with the CEO and the city attorney present. So, those are the exceptions that I think apply here. Any questions on, on those? Okay. Min, oh, sorry, Counselor Halloran.
Go ahead.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question. Is there a, is there any law that says we have to go into executive session, or is it for our protection against lawsuits? Because this all came about because I vote against going into executive sessions. I believe in being transparent with the taxpayers and their money. And we've had conversations about it, and my question to you is, you know, is that a protection for the city that you recommend, or is there a law that says we have to have executive sessions?
Favorite lawyer answer, it depends.
How much did that cost?
So, there are certain sections that you are required by law to discuss in executive session. An example would be poverty abatements. It would be a violation of state law to name who applied for a poverty abatement, or to discuss the merits of that publicly. Where the council has a choice are, and so I guess another example would be certain records are deemed confidential, so discussion of them publicly would be a violation of whatever statute applies. And there are penalties for violating those, either in the specific statute, or the Freedom of Access Act specifically has civil penalties that kick in. Of course, the Attorney General has to bring those, so the, the odds of enforcement action are, are low. Other exceptions that we discuss, such as legal counsel, economic development, those sort of things, those, the council has discretion, and, and you, I think, identified it very well in the beginning of your question, that it's there to, in part, protect the council, it's also there to protect the confidentiality of the matter being discussed. So, i, if the, involves sensitive information about sort of third party, that wouldn't be appropriate to discuss that publicly, that, that's a valid reason, and that's why those exceptions exist. It's also to protect the city from potential liabilities such as discussions with legal counsel. You don't want to have candid discussions about pending litigation, so that could certainly jeopardize your attorney-client privilege. But I think to a broader point you're getting at is that I, I do caution, just because you can, doesn't mean that you should. And I do think that's a valid point to discuss, and I think there are sometimes risks of overusing executive sessions because they can give the perception, although unintended and perhaps not any valid reason, that you're doing something nefarious. Or, and so I, I do think it's appropriate to exercise caution, and that's why the law actually has the procedure, and we'll get into the procedure for an executive session, is it has to be by a motion. The motion has to cite the specific reason. It needs to, you have to have a motion to open the executive session and close it. Only one topic can be discussed. You cannot take action on that topic. The scope needs to be identified in the motion, ideally, but not strictly required in the agenda, and then there has to be a three-fifths vote in order to go into executive session.
Three-fifths?
Yep.
Kind of a question along those lines. Because part of the law around executive sessions is also, it's not that it's preventing information from the community, it's also protecting the community. We represent the community. So, for example, if there's a real estate deal, if we were to announce that publicly, we might go move the property from $500,000 that we're going to purchase, now it's going to cost a million dollars because we addressed it publicly and didn't do that in, in executive session. Same with personnel. If we bring a personnel issue publicly and address it, the city can then be sued for defamation and all of that, that, that could play out. So, there's, there's, it's not that, it shouldn't be perceived by the community that the council has an agenda to discuss things in isolation. There's also a duty that we hold as members of this body when we're representing the citizens of the community, to make sure that we don't put the city and therefore their tax dollars at risk because of our actions, to put something that shouldn't be public, public.
I, I think that's very well said, and that, that's accurate. One recommendation I, I can make, and I, I haven't followed the context, so I'm just speaking generally from my experience of different municipalities, is it can help to, when you come back into public session, or if you put them at the end before you go into public session, to give a summary of what, not just, you know, this meets the, this isn't a good discussion, it's personnel matters, that's exactly what you should do, but say it's at economic development. Give as much information as you can to give the public an idea of what's going to be discussed, and, and I, and I think it's helpful to remind the public, again, no action can be taken in the executive session. It's just for discussion for exactly those purposes. So, finally, I'll just wrap up with the consequences and enforcement. What happens if you have a sort of legal executive session? The only real remedy for a citizen here, well, there are two. So, the Attorney General is the only one authorized to collect civil fines, five hundred the first time, a thousand the second time, two thousand for the third or more time in four years. The only action for a citizen is to invalidate as known void any action taken in the illegal executive session. So, what that means in practice is even if you make an error, and you go into executive session when you really shouldn't, if the council didn't make a, didn't make an action, there's, there's not much a citizen can do to have a remedy there. So, any, any challenge they brought would likely be thrown out of court on those grounds, that, that there really isn't a remedy because a action wasn't taken. So, it would then be up to the Attorney General to bring any sort of action. So, but if someone does, and if they are successful after a de novo hearing, which means a trial of the facts, significant penalty here is that the court may award attorney's fees if it finds there's been bad faith. So, I think we all have our own definitions of bad faith, but essentially, it means that the council tried to subvert the purposes of the Freedom of Access Act, and it wasn't for any legitimate purpose. So, that, that's more than just a mistake or bad advice from your legal counsel, or something like that. And last couple of points I just wanted to make were sort of some traps of the weary. Email discussion, don't do it. That can be construed as an executive session, so certainly email amongst counselors is appropriate for determining what should be on the agenda, but don't have a substantive discussion of those items. And that's true even with the change to remote proceedings. That law is clear that even if you have enacted a remote proceedings policy, the discussion can't be like text-based, it, it's got to be video or tele, telephonic. Note-taking, again, not strictly prohibited, but don't do it. Best advice is to treat executive sessions as confidential for all the reasons that we discussed, and even though the law court has made clear that those notes would be confidential and not public records, you also have, you still have record retention rules, and so it just creates a situation where the staff members now have to go back and figure out what was part of an executive session, what wasn't. So, best practice, don't take notes during executive session. That's all I've got.
Other questions? Counselor Kaplan?
So, if somebody wants to know what occurred during a, an executive session, under the Freedom of Access Act, would they be entitled to a record of that?
No. Any record that was generated or discussed during the Freedom, during an executive session would not be a public record. So...
So, how would they be able to get the, because then, how do they get information on the executive section to know that we didn't do something wrong if they have no ability to get information under the Freedom of Access Act?
So, that's the importance of making a motion, and that's why the law requires you to make a motion that specifies the scope of what was discussed. Does that answer your question, or are you thinking, how are they ever going to find out that something bad happened if they can't ask?
No, no, not like that, but, you know, if somebody says, well, you know, under, let's say we're looking at, I don't know, TIF funding, and they want to know what was discussed about a building, or a property, or something along those lines, and we do it under executive session, and they want to know about it, because maybe they feel like they got left out of something, who knows? How would they be able to find that information under the Freedom of Access Act?
Sure. Okay, yeah, let me answer, I, I, now I understand what you're saying. Right. So, certain, just because you take a record into executive session doesn't immediately mean that it is confidential. So, most of those TIF documents would still be public records, but you'd have to work with your, you know, TIF applicant to determine what information premature disclosure would, you know, put the city at a substantial disadvantage. And again, I think that's the importance of also, you can have your discussion, so take TIF, right? The sensitive information is typically going to be discussions about credit enhancement agreements, and what percentage the town is going to retain. It may also be some proprietary, say it's a wind turbines, it may be some proprietary information about the technology and what they expect to generate, but you can still, that, that's a narrow subset. So, you can give, you can come out of a executive session and discuss, give a summary of everything that doesn't include those specific numbers. Again, that's something, you know, you'd want to discuss with counsel, and also the individuals that you're negotiating with.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Am I needed for anything else? Okay.
Item eleven, discussion and action on premium pay for city departments. And your motion?
Yes. So, after the last meeting and the discussion that was had in the directive that you gave that you'd like to see department heads come forward, I had several department heads reach out to me, and in an effort for efficiency, and rather than having them all come up and, and speak to the council one by one, I had them all draft their information and send it to me, for me to present to the group. I asked them all to be here in case you have individual questions for specific department heads, but I felt this might be a little bit more efficient than to have them all coming up and, and giving their, giving their, their plea for, for their employees. So, just to start out, I just want to say that, you know, throughout this pandemic and in recent weeks, the city has been, the city employees have been hit harder than we ever were throughout the earlier stages in, in the pandemic. Currently, we have at least six people total who are out with COVID in various different departments. We've had significant outages, well, as you all know, we had to close City Hall for a day and, and kind of regroup because we had multiple people in the clerk's office who were out. Highway departments had numerous people out over the last couple of weeks, police and fire have as well. And all those departments, when, you know, when you lose one or two people, three people in, in the instance of the fire department right now, others have to pick up the slack, you know, of the absence of those folks. And throughout the, you know, throughout the pandemic, a lot of the different groups throughout the city and the employees have, have gone above and beyond what their typical daily, you know, job entails to, to make sure that the city continues to service the public, and we continue to, to offer the highest level of, of service available. And they were all, as we discussed last time, they were all identified through multiple sources as, as, as essential workers throughout the pandemic, and, and once City Hall was, was reopened, they all came back to work in force and, and have done outstanding work throughout. So, just to kind of highlight some of the different, kind of outside the norm types of... you know, first off, dealing with the clerk's office out front, many of you can remember when we first opened back up to the public, our clerks were servicing our, our citizens out in the parking lot through the winter months, the cold and the snow, they were out there exchanging paperwork, getting payments so that we could continue to, to operate without having folks in the building and, and the potential for exposure there. They did that for, for many weeks until we opened the building up, and then we had limited access and had to, you know, restrict the number of people that were allowed in the building. So there was a whole host of sort of nuances that we had never really been faced with before, having a, you know, a public building where the people come and go freely. So our folks had to police that, and we did, you know, outstanding job of making sure that we were able to service the public again without major inconvenience or disruption to, to the, to the public that was coming here to City Hall. Along with that, you know, when you had the, once we got the building back open and you had the constant public interface in the building, you know, increased need for, for sanitizing and cleaning of the facility was, was added, you know, an additional burden to our, our staff, which only consists of two people, you know, to, to maintain this whole building, as well as other properties throughout the city. So their work, their workload was, was increased exponentially throughout the pandemic when they were frequently cleaning, you know, frequently touched surfaces and so forth in the earlier stages to make sure that, you know, the employees as well as the public that came into the building were, were safe to do their business here. Throughout the, the building, we had, you know, multiple different situations where, you know, our folks who work upstairs, for those of you who've been up there, you know, this office spaces are very small upstairs, so they were coming down into the lobby to, to meet with individuals, whether they be citizens or, or builders dealing with code or planning, meeting in the lobby to, to work with those folks so, so that they could effectively socially distance and still get the, the work done that they needed to get done. Out at the, you know, out at the transfer station, the staff out there interacts with the public every single day, exchanges information with those folks and frequently assists certainly elderly and, and disabled folks with the removal of their trash and other things from their vehicles. Our, you know, highway department was subject to months of, of mask wearing while they were outside doing manual labor, and for any of us who, who wear these things on a regular basis and certainly try to exercise or do anything like that, you know how cumbersome that can be and just really disruptive just to your, your, your functioning. There were also, and again, throughout the course of the entire pandemic, you know, the highway department and the wastewater and, and water departments, all that work outside of the city hall, you know, they were out there doing their jobs, interacting with the public and putting, potentially, you know, putting themselves at risk and risk of contracting the, the virus and taking it home to their families. Wastewater, you know, still is, is a high risk because you can actually, they detect the COVID vaccine, excuse me, the COVID virus in, in the wastewater itself, and, you know, our folks are, are testing that every day as part of their duties and part of their responsibilities. So there's, you know, there's increased threat of, of exposure there. And, you know, wastewater plant, it can't operate by itself, it has to be, someone has to be there 24/7. Same with the, you know, the water department, people need to be there and treating at those facilities and making sure that everything's running smoothly and the chemicals are all handled appropriately so that we can continue to provide clean drinking water for our citizens as well as wastewater disposal for, for our citizens. I said a little bit about the clerks, you know, the also, as far as the clerks go, and really all of City Hall, another really, you know, big, big drain and a big push was, you know, the presidential election. And, you know, we were right, right at the height of the, of the pandemic at that point, globally anyway, and, you know, we, we had a presidential election that we had to have. And the amount of work that went into that, not just the election portion, but the planning for it, the one-way traffic, the, you know, the assistance from the, the facilities folks and all of the employees to make all of that happen was, you know, was really above and beyond and outside the norm of what they, you know, what they ordinarily do on a daily basis. Looking through real quick, just, others, you know, another, one of the department heads was IT, you know, the IT department, they were here early, early on in the, in the pandemic when it was only police and fire in the building, the building was still closed, they had to frequently come in and assist with projects in, in the police department, issues with computers and so forth, and working right alongside all of the employees, and they continue to do that at a very high level they did throughout the pandemic to ensure that our systems keep running and not only computer, as you well know, they do much more than computers. Jason does our traffic lights and is responsible for, for computers throughout in the cruisers and our video systems throughout the city and our cameras. So they're much more than just, just computers, and they had to maintain and continue to do that work throughout the pandemic and have contact with individual employees, police, fire, City Hall employees and, in order to do that work. And they, you know, they did that without fail throughout. That pretty much hits the highlights. Again, I mean, I've got some pages here, and, and, you know, the, the department heads did a very good job of bringing forward, you know, cases for all of their employees and, and the extra work that they've done through the pandemic to make, you know, to allow the city to continue to run efficiently and for us to, you know, to deliver a high level of service. And, and I think that they're all very well deserving of the premium pay, and I think that they make very compelling cases.
So do you have a specific recommendation around the pay?
Yeah, I think the 1,000 that was brought forward at the last meeting by Councilor O'Halloran is probably, is an appropriate amount that I'd like to recommend the council consider.
How many workers is that? Or I think I remember when we, when we talked about the police, the fire department, it was like, for these dates, for workers who fit in sort of that certain time category?
Right. So, yeah, so the police and fire was a little bit different because we were talking specifically at that point about the matching hazard pay from the county, which was, that was marked with specific times. And at the end of that discussion, I think it was Councilor Chair, Chair Hamilton that said, you know, basically forego the dates, we're not really interested in the dates. We had to keep those dates for the, for the county match, but for the city match, it was, it was the employees in general. So, you know, during that, during the early stages, obviously, there was, you know, City Hall was closed and some folks were working at home, but this is more really, in my opinion, this is more of a recognition of the fine work that they've done since coming back to City Hall and the fact that, you know, the exposure now is greater than it really ever was for, for the probability of contracting the, the virus at this point, as we've seen over the last, you know, two months with, with many, many more cases than what we had early on in, you know, in the pandemic, even though we did have some exposures back then. And the number, exact number?
I think about 60 to 65.
Question. Councilor O'Halloran.
How is that different than what I presented? To give all employees that were not school, fire, or police a $1,000 bonus? How is this any different?
It's not any different, sir. I'm just, I'm following up with, I'm just following up with what Dale, Chair Hamilton asked for the department heads, like the police and fire did, to come forward with information about their individual departments as to why they felt that it was appropriate.
Councilor O'Halloran.
So, so you're not omitting anybody? So if this was to pass, everyone in the city would get the same treatment? Is there anybody omitted?
No.
Every department came forward and asked for their people to get a bonus? Do I understand that right?
No. Not every department did. There were one or two who did not, but they would be included in what I'm recommending for.
So you're recommending what I presented?
Yep, yep. With the, with the guidance that we were asked to provide information specifically about, from the departments, which is what I've done.
So if this passes, nobody gets omitted, everybody gets the same fair treatment of $1,000?
That's correct. With the exception of myself, everyone will get the $1,000 if it were passed.
Councilor Kaplan.
Does that include the library?
Yes.
Councilor Blanchett.
How is that going to, later on tonight, in the agenda on item 17? We've got a request from Public Works to implement a winter stipend for highway department members. How is that going to work bumping up against that? And there's also a request coming from her at next month's meeting for a, a pay hike.
So two totally different issues. The, this is, the ARPA funding for this $1,000 is in recognition of the work that they've done, the work that they can continue to do, and the threat or danger that they're under with constant exposure to COVID virus. So that's the ARPA funding. The later agenda item, and I won't get into great detail about it because we'll get there when we get there, but that is an effort for retention for our plow drivers, as we've talked about in the past. Those type of workers are in high demand right now. All of the contractors are looking for operators to run their equipment, and we've had several of our individuals who work for our highway department who are highly skilled, who have been contacted by contractors to try and get them to come and work for them. They're offering more pay, and this is an effort at a time where we had multiple vacancies in the highway department, where we cannot really afford to lose additional people in order to maintain safety and keep our roads clear. And that, so what she's asking for is a seasonal bonus, which wouldn't be paid out until the end of the winter season in an effort to try and retain those folks and make sure that we don't get below a critical level of, of employees to maintain safety and keep our streets clean.
So this whole package will take up roughly $100,000 of the 860, I believe?
No, her, so.
No, I'm sorry, the, what you're presenting tonight, along with what we gave police?
Police and fire was.
Police and fire, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, police and fire was 26 employees total, so 26,000, and this would be somewhere in the 60 neighborhood. So you're talking 85 to 90,000 out of the 800 and.
That, I'm truly mixed on this in terms of, just from the equity perspective in terms of just the community, one of the most, I think, unfortunate things about the pandemic has been the total politicization of the whole, of a virus. It should have stayed with entities that deal with viruses, it should have been clear about that, but then we had politicians who wanted to step in and, and mandate. And when we look at our businesses in the community, different types of businesses and how they were so negatively impacted because of politicians stepping in, imposing these restrictions. I mean, let's look at now, although we're, some of us are wearing masks, fact of the matter is that the spread of the virus now is, is much greater than it ever was at the beginning of the pandemic. And yet, we had mandates to do XYZ, you must wear a mask, you cannot enter this facility, restaurants cannot operate. Going into a restaurant and somehow you can take your mask off when you're eating and miraculously you're not spreading the virus. I mean, it's, a lot of the inconsistencies has led to a problem with people accepting what is effective. And it's, it's led over in terms of people questioning whether they should get the vaccine or not. I think that's a personal decision, but it certainly has been jeopardized and people's health have been jeopardized because of these arbitrary types of positions that politicians have imposed. And so when I look at this proposal, I certainly value every city employee and I value every worker in the community, I deal with that myself, and I think people are, should be recognized for the extraordinary efforts. As a, as a city body, it's just, it's hard to then say, well, we'll give over this, this, these dollars to employees, knowing that there are other people in the community that suffered just as great and we're not able to give to them. So that's where I'm torn on it from that perspective. And the other point that I made at the time when we approved for first responders is, this is, this should be very clear that this is about, if it's approved for me, it's about thanking the workforce for their extraordinary efforts during it. It's not about the jeopardy or the danger because that's ongoing. This is going, this is not a pandemic that is going away. It's not going to disappear. There is no herd immunity that, that we were told, that's, it's a worldwide, if you study viruses, this is going to be endemic, it's going to be part of what we live with. And we're seeing that now in terms of the spread. So to think that we are going to give something because of a potential danger and the danger that people face, I don't think that's a fair assessment. And it also leaves it open to say, well, what about next month? When we have 20% of our workforce out, shouldn't we give more then? I don't think we should tie it in that way. If we do this, it should be about thanking people for, for making those sacrifices, for going out into the parking lot to serve the community, for making those adjustments. That I absolutely appreciate, and that's what this should be about, is a thank you for the hard work, not associated with the dangers of, of the pandemic, because what we know and what we see now, it's worse now than it was before. Councilor Kaplan.
Well, I agree with you. I also wonder about, you know, how many of these city employees lost wages while we were closed? Because there are people who ran restaurants that lost their business, lost their revenue. Some are still on the verge of closure because they can't even get help because of the pandemic. And so, you know, there's people who worked at Walmart or worked at the grocery store on the front lines and at times lost wages because of closures, or they couldn't, you know, have customers in their store, waitresses that lost tips because they couldn't take care of customers. And they were limited in how many people were allowed in their business at any particular time, and yet the ones that were there, they're not getting any hazard pay from anybody.
Well, I guess my only answer to that is we, we certainly don't have the capacity to go out and go into private businesses and award hazard pay to those folks, but we do have the capacity to do it for our employees.
Councilor O'Halloran.
Two months ago, and forgive me if I've got the dates wrong, the fire and the police come forward asking for a $1,000 bonus. I voted against it, and I said at the time, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I couldn't support one group getting a $1,000 pandemic bonus and not the entire staff getting pandemic bonus. I voted against it because I was against the bonus plan. I think we all got dealt equal, to your point, we all got dealt equal. we all got dealt equal troubles. And we all have dealt with the troubles. However, this council voted to approve two departments in this city to get bonuses and leave the others out. I said from the beginning, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I believe we've set ourselves up that we have no choice. That's why last month I sponsored this. Two, if you're going to give to one group, you give to all groups. Everyone had a different time during this pandemic. Everyone got something different out of it. Some people got benefits to stay home. Some people didn't. Some people went out in the parking lot to register a car, whatever. Somebody everybody's life was changed. And this council elected to give two departments in this city a bonus. And I voted against it. And the reason I voted against it is for this purpose. You've got two departments coming forward. I put it on the agenda the next month to level the playing field. And that got voted down. And it was suggested that the department heads could come forward. Now we're here, two or three months later, with the same bill as we had two months ago, which you either do for all or you do for none. And if in fact, this gives everybody equal treatment, I would be in favor of it. But it needs to be for every employee, not a few selected like this council started doing. I didn't like that.
Counsel Kaplan.
But more to your point, you also had sponsored to give the remainder back to the taxpayers. And that's more to my point is that many of our taxpayers lost revenue. They didn't have.
One step at a time.
They didn't have their businesses open. They modified their businesses. They did amazing jobs with the sidewalks and things along those lines. So that would encompass your entire recommendation to fully level the playing field.
Counsel Miller.
Did any city employees lose wages?
No.
Counsel Hanson.
I'm torn about this also. The argument about hazard specifically and about COVID, I think, ignores the fact that back at the beginning of the pandemic, the people who were needing to work face to face with constituents and people in the town had no protection. They often didn't have enough personal protective equipment, and there were no vaccines. Even though as a physician, even though I am seeing way more COVID now than I was at the beginning, I have plenty of protection. I am not going to die of COVID, and I am not going to be hospitalized for COVID because I have a vaccine. That makes it a completely different world, even though we're seeing a lot more COVID. You have the option to prevent severe disease in almost all cases, not if you're very immunocompromised, not if you're very old. But for most of us, it's really up to you to be treated. So that doesn't it's not as hazardous now, even though it's around more. So I just want to say that because I think that's true. The pandemic is horrible, and it's affecting us all in different ways. It is not as dainty. You have an option for it to not be as dangerous to you now as it was. Separate from that. So to me, approving the funds for the fire and the police just made complete sense. They were under major hazard during that time. They're not in that same hazard right now compared to people who could work from home or didn't have to interact with the public or didn't have to interact with sick public. That and as I will bring up in my motion in the future, it really bothers me to try to make a $100,000 decision tonight or an $65,000 decision tonight without having this grander discussion about how would this money best serve the community at large. So I feel that way on the one hand. On the other hand, I know it's been horrible to work for the city, just like it's been horrible to work pretty much any place else. And it would be hard for me to say, should we thank those people? It's going to be really hard for me to say no to that. So that's where I'm waffling in my mind. And I just wanted to say that.
Also, I just want to put some context in terms of the process. When the fire and police came forward, it was one, the county was making a contingent their allocation on municipality buy-in. And at that time, Manager Moser, you I believe you told us very specifically that you offered every department head to come forward and make a case. And at that time, there was no takers, no one else, no, no department came forward. And so when it was not approved by the council for everyone, that was the the door that was left open is that we said if the department heads wanted to come forward and do follow the process that you outlined, that that could happen and we would put it on agenda, which we did. Two very different scenarios. They've come forward now to present their case and to make their case. Originally, they didn't do that. And we had two departments that did, and the other departments had declined at that point. So that was the.
At that time, we didn't know that we could come forward.
Well, I'm speaking specifically to what was said to the council at that time. And if you want to go back and look at the meeting, you can. But that was the comment that was was made.
I think we're.
Not at the moment. You can in a second if you want to go to the podium. And if you would like to go to the podium now, you may do that. But I'm not going to get in an argument with you from your chair.
I have no idea that I agree with you. You know, this basically comes down to a pretty, pretty simple point. You chose to give it to two departments.
Steve, would you state your name, please, for the record?
Steve Joy, Facilities Director, City Hall. And by the way, because I've heard you guys say it so many times, we were in the building. We didn't work from home. We didn't get a paycheck at home. We were here. Okay. I just want to make that clear. This all comes down to that you guys gave two departments hazard pay. Everyone else in this building that works here now feels that our positions are not as important. Okay. I understand what the police does. I understand what the fire department does. We're all working for the same company. We wouldn't even be here if that didn't happen. Okay. That's why none of the staff spoke up as far as hazard pay goes. Because until the police and the fire got that hazard pay, there was no reason for us to say anything. This is all about the precedent that was set when you guys did that. And all we're asking for is to be fair. And I want to point out, thank you, Mr. O'Halloran, for what you have said, because that's it, plain and simple. I mean, this goes round and round and round. But it all comes down to that. And we don't feel like we were treated fairly.
And so I'll just go back to when this was initially, when the fire and police came forward, that was raised. And we were told that the other departments did not come forward. It is.
Again, we didn't know that we could.
Can I please finish? Can I can I finish?
Certainly can.
Thank you. We didn't know. That was what was told to us. Is it on the agenda tonight?
It's what on the agenda.
Is this topic on the agenda? Did the departments have an opportunity to come forward?
Yes, we all I believe most of us wrote a letter.
Correct. So I just wanted I want to stress that point because I want to stress it to the city employees that the process, the door wasn't closed. We didn't stop the opportunity for that to happen. And I'll speak for myself. It was an invitation for the department heads in the other departments to come forward and present the same case that the police and fire did. So did it happen at the same time? No. But do you have an opportunity to do that this evening? Yes. And so that is not an unfair treatment. We haven't voted yet on this. But it's the same process that we brought forward with the police and fire. And at that time, we were told that that the other departments hadn't brought anything forward in terms of making their case.
As soon as I was told that individual department heads had to bring it to Mr. Moser, I did. How could I have done it any sooner than that? We didn't know about.
That's what I'm saying. That's what at that time that we voted, we did not have that information. We did not.
That's correct. Until afterwards. Then when it was asked for that information, I believe we all did our job and provided that information. Actually, I had an agenda item on there for the maintenance department here at City Hall, which was taken off and replaced with the agenda item that is now on there. Because we were told to present on our own, which is what I was I was prepared to do. Because and most of it stems from listening to you guys several times say, but there was nobody in the building. There was nobody in the building. Do you really think a building like this can run itself for several months without somebody being here for the HVAC system, for the life safety systems in this building? It doesn't happen. It doesn't happen. We were here. And I don't know if you have you read my letter? Has anyone read my letter?
Yes, they have not read it because it came to me, not them.
I mean, that pretty much spells out what the maintenance department did. And I know that the maintenance department is kind of like an under the radar. It's, you know, behind closed doors. But let me tell you, you can't run a building like this without having somebody here to keep an eye on it. And I'm sorry, but we did a pretty damn good job.
Steve, my only point is that that's what we're doing this evening is listening. That's why Manager Moser presented for the department heads. That was not available to us until this evening. That's my point. We did not have your letter until this opportunity. It was not on the agenda prior to this. That's why we are hearing it this evening.
Steve.
Counsel O'Halloran.
It was on the agenda last month. Was it not?
No, it was not.
The same item, you mean?
No, I presented.
Oh, yes, that you presented. Yes.
To level the playing field.
Exactly. I agreed 100%.
To be fair with all employees. And it got voted down last month.
Yes.
And I just.
Not by me.
Does that explain why I'm a little bit upset?
Counsel O'Halloran, just so you were clear, in terms of what I just said before, and I was trying to paint the scenario in terms of the process that has unfolded. And I'm talking for myself, not anybody else. When this was originally, when the police and fire came, that was the police and fire. And at that point, no other department had presented a case for the use of it. That was the discussion that evening. So we voted on the police and fire.
Because I didn't know.
And then you put on an agenda item that you felt that all departments, if we're going to do it for one, we do it for all. That was not approved by the council. My comment at the time was, I very much if department had still wanted to present their case and do the same thing that the police and fire did in terms of why do they deserve to have this $1,000 premium pay, that they could come forward and do that. And we could hear that in the context of the departments coming forward, which is why it was on the agenda for this evening, for that same opportunity. So for me, there's a difference between just approving it because it's to equal the playing field, as you suggested. I wanted to hear personally the detail behind it of what what went into it. And that's what we heard this evening. So for me, that was that's a different perspective.
I respect what you're saying. For me, I was just trying to fix the wrong. And if that would have been voted in favor of, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. That's my.
Well, we wouldn't. But we also wouldn't have the information that the departments presented.
Because I think the important thing that we're missing out on here is it's not just all about equitability. It's not all about giving one and giving all. It was the opportunity. And if you want to talk about equitable, well, this is equitable because the fire chief and the police chief had to stand deputy chief had to stand up here and explain to you why they felt they were entitled to hazard pay. And if we had passed your your last month's proposal, that wouldn't have been equitable because they didn't have to put any of that effort in. Now they've put the effort in. They've provided with examples of what they've done, what their staff has done, that is worthy and is justification for premium pay. And that's what's being brought forward tonight. It's not just about equitable. It's about what efforts were put in.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Blanchett.
Time is marching on. Does it matter one bit whether it was done last month, this month, next month? What's the difference? Why are we arguing, well, last month I did this. This month, we can do this. We have an agenda item. What is it? Number 17, number 18, 19, whatever, to discuss the goals and plans for the usage of ARPA funding on the agenda this evening. Why don't we just wrap it all into one item? And then we can make a motion out of that.
Counsel O'Halloran, go first, or?
You can.
Jana Richards, I am the Economic Development Director, but I also oversee the Development Services Department, which is a city planner, Development Services Coordinator, and myself. I know a couple of you have brought up the point of waffling back and forth on saying like, you know, why city employees would get the premium pay and there's businesses out there that suffered greatly and citizens and residents out there that suffered greatly during this pandemic and continue to suffer. And trust me, I feel that sense of guilt upon myself as well. And so that's why I just wanted to share with you that in the Treasury rules, one of the allowable uses of these funds is for the city to provide premium pay to eligible workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency. And this is the part that I wanted to highlight is that or to provide grants to third-party employers with eligible workers performing essential work. It is within your authority to dedicate funds from the ARPA funds to in the form of a grant to third-party employers. And so I know you're going to have another discussion later on through the work sponsored by Counselor Hanson. So perhaps that's something that could be discussed during that time. The other thing that I wanted to say was that aside from assisting businesses and the employers, there are also abilities to come up with programs to assist citizens and residents and employees. But so you have the authority to thank and provide some of these funds through different programming, not just by giving people a tax break, but coming up with creative programs. And I would be happy to help and assist in some of those programs moving forward. So that was one of the things I wanted to highlight. The other thing I wanted to highlight is that the Treasury rules and regulations define what an eligible worker and what essential work is. And I feel like that would be helpful for this council if you would like me to read it. If not, I have my memo here that details exactly what that is. It's up to you. I don't want to take any more time. But I feel like if the rules and regs are telling you what an eligible worker is and what essential work is, it might be helpful.
I'd like to hear it.
I'd like to hear it. Okay. So eligible worker, those workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors and additional sectors as each governor of a state or territory, state or territory, or each tribal government or local authority may designate as critical to protect the health and well-being of the residents of their state, territory, or tribal government. I will tell you that we read the main municipal authority association's guidance on this as well. They specifically acknowledge that state, local, and tribal government work is listed as an essential infrastructure sector. So that's eligible worker. Essential work, work involving regular in-person interactions with patients, the public, or coworkers, or regular physical handling of items handled by or that are to be handled by patients, the public, or coworkers of the individual that is performing the work. I'm happy to give this to you all. It was very helpful for me in having to write, you know, for me, coming from a planning background, it's all about rules and regulations and ordinances, and if you meet it or you don't meet it. And in my humble opinion, and to represent some of my coworkers here, the majority of us do do meet these definitions. And the fact that we helped with the if this was a business, and then sometimes it is, is that it's a continuity of the operations of this business. We didn't skip a beat, not one of us. And we had regular council meetings, regular planning board meetings. And the cash flow came through this city to be able to substantiate what we do. Everybody got a paycheck. And, you know, the tax base remained fairly stabilized through all of that. So I'll be happy to give this to you all. And thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that real quickly. Public Works Director Lisa Sekulic, in my memo, I noted a lot of the same things Jenna did. Per main state statute, on top of first responder agencies being emergency management, fire, law enforcement, medical, emergency medical, public works, and other emergency services, public works departments are considered first responders. services, public works departments are considered first responders. Per the definition of critical infrastructure sectors, all public work departments meet one of those critical sectors. Transportation, the highway department, without them, the roads would not be plowed or passable in the winter months, these past two winters. Public health and safety, as well as sanitation for the transfer station, without proper disposal, solid waste available, there would be a public health and safety concern. The water department, again, public health and safety, without the continuance of free-flowing water, we would have a public health crisis. And wastewater department sanitation, without the continuance of working wastewater disposal system, you'd have a public health crisis, both here in Ellsworth and in a lot of the surrounding towns that we take septic from. So, again, all of my departments meet the requirements of the stuff Jana just talked about.
Mike Harris, Ellsworth wastewater. I really was not going to speak on this tonight, actually. I was going to let you guys do whatever. You give me the hazard pay, you don't give me hazard pay, it doesn't matter to me, really. So really, what I'm going to say is, the points that I think are the most important in terms of the city and the city employees are the equity that we're talking about. As you can see by the emotion displayed by some of my fellow employees, I think you definitely risk a serious hit to the morale of the city employees by treating some departments differently than others. So I will say that. That being said, I think we're also at a point where, and Counselor Hanson very eloquently described, pandemic now is not the same as a pandemic then. So the pandemic then, when we were talking about public health, and we were talking about employees that were out there when there was no vaccine, and when there was no treatment really for COVID, and it was an unknown situation, I think at that point, yeah, you're talking about a true hazard. Okay? And now, it's different. The hazard is not necessarily as severe unless you decide, for your own personal reasons, that you don't want to take adequate measures to make it more safe for you. But in terms of what we can do for the community, there are plenty of grant programs out there for businesses to apply for, not saying they'll get them, because I didn't. But there are other provisions for private businesses to try and recoup losses, secure funding to help their business, separate from anything the city would choose to do or not choose to do. There are other ways for them. It's not on the city primarily to provide this relief. So what I'm standing here saying is, this is not necessarily going to be about anything other than we were here in varying capacities, we worked in varying capacities, and when you see other communities doing it, when you see other communities providing funding for their employees, when you see the county providing funding for their employees, when you see the school department providing funding for all of its employees, and they are a city department, at some point, you're going, this is going to happen. And so for me, I will, came up, and we had a department head meeting talking about hazard pay. I said, I'm not asking you for hazard pay. I don't need it. Because I got to work. I got my paycheck. I kept my benefits. Okay? It wasn't until hazard pay was approved for certain departments and not for others, and then other departments said, well, we're going to go forward too. And my employees came to me, and they said, well, you said you're not going to ask for hazard pay, but all these other departments are going to ask for hazard pay. So if they're going to ask for hazard pay, why aren't you going to ask for hazard pay? And I said, well, I guess I'm going to ask for hazard pay. Because ultimately, I represent my employees, to me. And so if it's in their best interest for me to do that, that's what I'm going to do. Okay? And so I think you have a situation now where it's a critical decision that you're going to make. I don't agree with putting it into the next agenda item that you're talking about, not Counselor Blanche. Because if you're going to pay the premium pay to the employees, whether you do or you don't, once that decision's made, that finalizes the total that's left for your ARPA funds. Then you can say, okay, this is what we have left, what are we going to do with it? I think ultimately here, because this discussion's been started, because, as you can see, there's a serious concern here with the employees in the city, because of the decisions that were made already, to me personally, this is going to be a critical choice that you're going to have to make, that is going to have a profound effect on the morale of the employees that work here. And we're in a situation right now where we're already trying to keep employees in a workforce that we're not as competitive in anymore. And that's the simple facts of it. Because of the way the workforce is now, and because of the acceleration of the pandemic and keeping people from working or wanting to work because of the pandemic, workers have become more of a premium. And companies that have the ability are able to be more competitive in offering them stuff that we can't offer them. Because we are always constrained by a municipal budget. We are always constrained by the taxes that are paid to us. We can't go outside that framework. Okay? So we have to think of other ways to try and be competitive in a market right now that doesn't favor us. And so, to put it bluntly, probably not a good idea to create a morale issue at a time when you're trying to retain employees. And that's all I have to say.
So, Mike, just real quick, I just wanted to clarify. So for you, when you had the opportunity originally, you had declined that, but it really changed.
Yeah.
For you. It changed after the fire and police came forward and presented their case. There was a shift, and that changed for you in terms of coming forward and presenting what you presented this evening.
Yeah, so the shift was, I went back to my employees, and I talked to them. And I said, hey, guys, look, the fire and police are going to go up for hazard pay. City manager has spoken to us about if we want to go for hazard pay, then we need to go in front of the council and talk about it. And I said, ultimately, I don't think I'm going to go up there and talk about getting hazard pay because of the reasons that I've stated. And my employees' opinion was at the same time was the same, was either everybody gets it or nobody gets it. And that's where the change happened. If you're going to give the hazard pay, give the hazard pay. If you're not going to give the hazard pay, fine, don't give the hazard pay. But at the point where some people got the hazard pay, other people didn't get the hazard pay, then other departments said, nope, we're going to go forward too, that's when you had the conflicts. And that's when they came and said, listen, I was going for it, the facilities management, everybody's going for it, how come you're not going for it? So, we're going for it.
I just like to make a comment unrelated to yours. But earlier in this evening, I heard that everybody outside of fire, police, and school would be getting this in this recommendation, okay? With the exception of you. So for crying out loud, if we're going to do this, let's not do the same thing. Let's include Glenn and not go through this next month.
You don't need it, I'll take it.
What's good for the goose is good for the gander, period.
I agree.
I just had a question, because Mike mentioned that the county and other cities or towns around here have used ARPA funding to give hazard pay. Is that so?
Yeah.
Water, yeah. Fox Sport, I think. Blue Hill. It's, this is.
There's multiple.
Counselor.
Is this across the board regardless of full-time, part-time? Or is it everybody just across the board?
We don't only have any full-time employees. I don't know about the library's employee list, but we don't really.
You don't want temporary part-time? Yeah, she has lunch, we just have.
Other than that, we don't have any part-time employees in the city.
And this is relatively everyone that was working permanent or full-time at the start of the pandemic when we didn't know that much about it? Or is it everybody that's current?
It's all employees.
Okay.
Counselor Miller.
I'd like to make a motion to approve using ARPA funding for all city employees to receive $1,000.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Do we need to be any more specific about that in terms of when you say all employees?
Friendly amendment.
They're not already received, maybe just because you have some that are already.
That's okay.
Excluding school.
Yes, everybody that isn't getting it.
And did we want to put a specific dollar amount on that? Second.
So you have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Heller.
Could we just, could you repeat that motion to be a little bit more clear, to exclude the school department but include everybody else?
Except for fire.
Except for fire and police.
Did you?
I'm not trying to change your motion, I'm just trying to clarify.
The clerk will read it back and see if this.
What I have is a motion by Counselor Miller to approve this item at $1,000 for all employees excluding the school department, the fire department, and the police department.
Thank you.
That's okay.
And that was second, right? Okay. So discussion. Counselor.
I was against anybody getting any money from the beginning, but I agree now, if you give it to one, you got to give it to all. That's all I just wanted to say.
Counselor.
I think if we're giving it to her, we should give it to Glenn also. Can we add that?
I'll take it.
He's a city employee.
I don't know why it would. I mean, I'm like distressed by this whole thing, but I can see things a little bit more clearly about how this has created a morale problem and about how it's related to what's happening in other towns. And so I'm sort of seeing the way that this is all making sense and that we should go in this direction, but I, after all of that, I can't sort of understand why we would leave Chief Moser out. So it didn't say all.
Yeah.
So it includes, so I'm sorry.
I got a paycheck from the city.
And I'm just saying words, so never mind that. Okay.
Counselor.
I got a paycheck from the city, that means I'm an employee. Because I'm going to Disney next month.
Counselor, you are way out of order. I would just like to say that in terms of this discussion, I think it's an important discussion, and I think that having a dialogue about something like this, we represent the community at large. And I understand the perspectives and the passion of city employees. I would, if I were in your shoes, I'd be doing the same thing. But we do have a responsibility to have a robust discussion, and this evening, it was on the agenda for this very reason, was to listen to what the employees had to bring forward in terms of, much like the police and fire. So I appreciate the passion, I appreciate you taking the time to present the case. Other comments? Counselor Blanchett.
So if this passes, now we'll face the fallout from the public, the perception fallout, what the attorney mentioned earlier on the other agenda item. The perception that we received 860, 870, I forget the exact amount, $1,000, and we're giving one-eighth of it to the city employees. The Joe taxpayer is going to say, yep, they took care of their own, and we got the screws. You know, we'll get the, we'll try to pick up what's left, but who knows what COVID's going to do unless see if they give any more to their own. I think this is wrong. I will not vote for it. I think we're rushing headstrong into it. It reminds me of, you know, being a kid, you find a buck or two on the sidewalk, and instead of thinking, what do I need? The only thing that you can think of is, how fast can I spend this? How fast can I just be done with my recent find? Well, we found 800 some odd thousand dollars, and now we're rushing to get rid of it. So, and we, there is no great time limit. I believe we have to, by the end of 2024, have to plan on how we're going to spend it. And I think it's 2026 that it has to be spent. It's only 2022, it's January of '22. We have plenty of time.
Counselor.
I just think that when we approved it for fire and police, we opened the door for everybody else. So if we had said in the beginning, we will not give it to fire and police, then we could sit here and say that we have until 2026 to spend it. But by opening up that door, this part of it, we're spending tonight.
Fire and police had no choice.
They don't, neither did anybody else.
They had to be out there. They didn't, we didn't know what was going on at the time in the early days of COVID, and yet they had to face it. They were given no choice.
We all faced it, everybody in the community.
Counselor.
I would just argue that with the number of Zoom meetings, that IT had to be here, and with the number of commodes flushing wipes, that wastewater had to be there, and with the fact that we still had to heat the place, maintenance had to be there, and we still had to collect taxes, and the clerk still had to be there. I just think that everybody still had to be there to make the city function. And so when we did give it to police and fire, we, you know, we can't pick one kid over another in this family, and give something to the two kids out of whatever number of kids, and we can have rivalry, and it's just no good, morale issues.
Counselor.
For crying out loud, we've spent three months arguing about being fair. Let's just be fair.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? One opposed, motion passes. Item 12, Presentation by the Finance Director and Software Committee on Proposed New Software.
Well, he's not really the finance director.
I was going to say, that is. It's been a long meeting, but I haven't lost that.
I have enough to do, I'm not the finance director also. I am presenting tonight for the finance director. He couldn't be here, he thought he was right. Okay. So this summer, the city manager formed a software committee with the task of evaluating existing city softwares and also to vet new software requests from the departments. The purpose for that would be to make sure that software we had didn't overlap with existing software, and to make sure that the software we might be buying was compatible with our, with our infrastructure and systems. As a first order of business, the committee decided to look at our Munis system because we knew that we had a large number of issues with that system already. So we took that as our first order of business. Some of the, and let me explain, Munis is, it's an ERP, so it's a software program that we use in all aspects of our day-to-day business. It's used for financials, budgeting, paying the bills, purchasing, vehicle registrations, tax billing, tax collection, all of that, requisitions for all the departments. Every department is involved with this software. Some of the major issues we've had with this program since we purchased it in 2012 were things like the annual processes, W2 generation, 1099 creation, tax billing, tax liens, business licensing, those annual tasks very rarely went off without a hitch. We almost always have to contact Munis tech support to get those done. The problem with that is their tech support has proven to be very unresponsive, slow, hard to work with. hard to work with. Often, just to get an issue to be looked at or worked or started on, we would have to contact their support manager, which is actually, which is actually a process that they endorse. They, they want you to have to contact a manager to, to get these things moving, which is not a common practice where other companies that we work with. The software is very complex. It's difficult to use. And it's underutilized. It's, it's difficult to get support. So there are portions of the program that we aren't using because, because of that. It's just not worth the effort to try and, to try and get those programs set up. City staff is off, have also learned to use the software with issues because it's too much work to go to the support and try to get them resolved. So they just live with it. Some of the things that we've tried to correct that or correct these problems is we've worked with our account rep and the support managers to find, try and find resolutions. We've filled out customer feedback forms whenever we do get them on issues we've worked on. We also encouraged all the city staff to do that as well, not just, it's not, so it's not just IT. We've reached out directly to our account rep, and we've had a meeting with the support management to discuss the problems, which were initially dismissed as maybe overblown or exaggerated, and also blamed on the pandemic, even though these, some of these issues go way back before, before that. We've posted in their online community bulletin board. We asked specifically, you know, what is your experience of Munis support compared to other software companies? And we were told, that, that post ended up being one of the most popular or active topics on their board. And we were told by almost everybody the same thing that we're experiencing. It's not been great. That post got their attention and ultimately led to a meeting with the director, VP of Support. They did admit that they were understaffed, that they were hiring more people, they were changing their onboarding process, but none of that, to this day, we haven't seen any of that come to fruition. Like, we, we're not seeing any changes in the support process even still. So, looking forward, the committee decided that it seemed like the time was right to move forward with a different system. And it also became, it quickly, it became quickly realized that we wouldn't be able to find a single system that would do all the things that Munis is doing. We did, we realized that it would be easier to find a solution for the front counter functions. And what I mean by that are tax billing, tax collection, tax liens, motor vehicle, vital records, dog licensing, than it would be to replace the financial functions like purchasing, budgeting, code enforcement, utility billing, accounts receivable, accounts payable. The reason for that would be there's not a lot of competition for those state-specific tasks, those functions. So pretty early on, we decided we'd like to purchase the Trio system. Trio is a municipal software program, specific domain, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That is very popular, but with small and medium-sized towns and cities. It has an intuitive interface. It's easy to use. It's designed for the town, you know, with a single clerk, all the way up to, you know, a town of our size. Bangor also uses parts of it.
Yep.
The, the interface should result in an improved experience for citizens coming in. It should be a more efficient process. The screens are simpler, quicker to get through, and we think that'll be a positive experience for everybody involved. Trio support is generally well-regarded as being prompt and efficient. And something I didn't include in my memo, which I should have, it's an important point, when you compare Trio with the equivalent modules in Munis, we will be saving about $8,400 per year in our annual maintenance cost, which translates into about a six-year break-even point when you include the purchase price. So also on the agenda tonight was to purchase a program called Casell. That is the program that the committee evaluated and liked for doing the financial side. But we are asking you to table that this evening because we're not prepared to move forward with it just yet. So another important point with Trio, if you choose forward to move forward with our request for purchasing Trio, it's important to note that it does not lock you in to any further purchase. Trio will integrate fine with Munis. So if you, if we come back for the Casell software and you decide no, we can, we can work with Trio and Munis together. In fact, we have to because we're hopeful to have Trio up and running by summer so that we can do tax billing. And we wouldn't, even if you, even if you did approve Casell tonight, it's an, it's an 18-month implementation. So we will have to use Trio and Munis together in the, in the interim. So those are the bullet points I have. I'm happy to take questions and go for that.
So is this a problem with the support or the software?
Yes.
And the support is from Tyler?
The Tyler, Tyler is the company. They, they, and Munis is their product.
And Munis is the product? So there, nobody else administers or does tech support for Munis?
That is correct.
And is there a per licensee fee? For example, you know, the number of units you're allowed to have? For example, you know, a lot of places might have 100 licenses, but 200 employees. So 150 employees logged on at the same time, 50 are going to get automatically logged off. Is there a per license?
Does Trio have the per lic? Either way, it's factored into our, into our price.
Yeah. So they do what they call a networking fee. The networking fee has unlimited number of licenses.
Because unlimited licenses.
And if they have upgrades or updates, is there any cost per upgrade or update?
Standard updates, there's no additional cost. Standard.
We're paying $11,000-ish a year for that maintenance and support. That includes the updates.
And is there a per tech support fee?
There is not. That's part of the maintenance and support annual fee.
Okay. And you said there's no contractual term?
No.
Not locked into a three-year deal?
No, this is a year-to-year. And we, we may have to notify them within a certain number of days, but yes, it's a year-to-year.
All right. But the bottom line is that it's the functionality and the lack of tech support by Tyler that's the issue.
Correct.
Thank you.
Council Henson.
So I just think, I just want to clarify that I'm understanding it right. For Munis, for what you're using now, you're paying $77,000 a year for that product. And this one is going to be $60,000 plus $11,000, like $71,000.
Yeah, so we're actually, if we go with Trio purchase, you're going to subtract $19,489 from that 77 and then add back 11.
Yeah, okay. So either way, you're saying this is a better, this is a better program?
Better program and we're saving $8,400.
And we're going to save money.
Yeah. Yeah. Other than the purchase. So it takes the six years to make back that purchase cost.
Yeah.
Council Hallen.
How long, maybe you don't know this, but how long ago did the decision get made by this council to go with Munis?
2000, well, it was purchased in 2012, so probably 2012.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And at the time, were you here at that point?
Mm-hmm.
You were? Okay.
Yep.
So at the time, was that considered the latest and greatest or?
It was, it's used by many cities and towns in the, in the state, including Bar Harbor and to recently Mount Desert, but they all, they're doing, they just did what we're looking to do. Yes, and primarily because it's one of the only programs that it's all-in-one. They do everything all in one package. And, yeah, go ahead.
So in your opinion, and, and that's really what I'm after here, is do you see any danger of jumping out of the stew pot into the fry pan?
No. You can never predict the future, right?
Oh, I understand.
But, but from what we've heard and what we've seen, we have several employees who've worked with Trio before in previous roles. And it, the majority of people we've talked to were very happy with it.
So just in terms of costs, I certainly hear in terms of functionality. What we don't know is Casell. So roughly, what's the purchase price for Casell and what is roughly the maintenance? Because that product is, factors into the overall savings. You can't just deduct the Trio. You have to look at what the Casell. So what is that overall cost?
So, and don't, you don't have to tie them together because you could come back. We could stick with Munis for financial.
Well, we could, yeah.
But we're going to come back.
We need the whole picture to understand.
So the Casell purchase, I believe, was around $180,000. The maintenance for that is, it was, it was 50 total. So it was, I think it's around, maybe around $50,000 for, I didn't pronounce the Casell, unfortunately. However, that might change with what we bring back. The reason we're not, there's several reasons we're not coming with it tonight. But a part of it is that we haven't decided what we're doing with code enforcement yet. Code enforcement likes a different program. So we're trying to decide how we're going to bring that to you and how we're going to work with that. So that changes the pricing.
So, so I guess, and I, maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, but if we, Casell aside, if we just say, okay, Casell's not even going to be purchased, that's the secondary, we will still need Munis?
Yes.
And then on top of that, you're recommending to purchase Trio?
Correct. But you take out of Munis the functions that Trio will then be performing.
So you purchase those by functionality? It's like a menu?
Modules. It's modules.
Modules?
Yep.
So there, there'll be a reduced cost?
The Munis bill is currently $77,000 and change. You'll take $19,000 off of that by going to Trio. And then the equivalent Trio maintenance for that is $11,000, but the difference, the difference being about $8,400. So your annual maintenance going forward, if you stayed with Munis, is $8,400 less than it is today.
And, and those modules that Casell would provide, how, how robust are those in Munis?
How robust are they in Munis or how, compared to Munis?
Or compared to Munis?
We were, we were all very impressed with Casell. Casell is a, I guess I would say it's a simpler program, but it actually meets our needs better than what Munis does. Munis is, Munis is used by cities 10 times our size, right? So it has a lot of functionality that we don't really need or use. And Casell aligns much better with what we're doing. So it has functionality that we need and have become accustomed to in Munis, but all, but all the other stuff that it's in Munis that we're not really using. So the functionality and comparatively, Casell does everything that we needed to do compared to what we're used to having in Munis.
And my last question is, so we're either, if we, if we went forward with that, then we're really talking about a more expensive system going forward for the benefit of having a better system. If we purchase Trio and Casell, it's going to be more expensive than Munis.
No. If you purchase Trio and Casell, so this is where the asterisk is because we don't know what code is doing, code enforcement. If code enforcement goes in Casell, you'll be saving almost $20,000 a year over what you're paying, under what you're paying now. So if we go with Casell, everybody else is in Casell, you factor in the, ignoring the purchase cost, just the annual maintenance now, is $20,000 annually less than you're paying today. If code enforcement goes with the software and you approve that, that they would like, you're paying basically the same thing you're paying today. So either option, your annual cost is either going to be the same or $20,000 less.
I thought you said that Casell, I'm sorry, this wasn't my last question, but it meant really. If, you, I thought you said the purchase price was $180.
So if you ignore the purchase, so yes, you have to, if you, that's your annual ongoing cost. So you're purchasing Casell for $180,000. And then there's a, must be, it must be about $40,000 annual commitment to that on top of that. So you buy the software, then you have to maintenance and support it for eternity, essentially. So when you factor in the purchase cost, I mean, that kind of goes out the window.
Right. The return on investment shrinks pretty quick.
It's a significant investment, yes.
So what's the difference between the maintenance and support fees versus the professional services fees, which are by telephone, $175 an hour, or $1,200 per day?
Professional services would be things like, like for the initial purchase, they're, they're going to be doing database conversions and things like that. But going forward, they could do custom development, things like that. So you could say, I need the software to do this specific thing that it can't do now. That's what they would charge you to do that or to create that. So approving Trio, and the reason we're here tonight to approve Trio without Casell is timing. If we're going to do tax billing in Trio in August, we need to get Trio purchased ASAP because we need to do the data conversion, get it up and running, and so on. So that's why we chose to come for Trio tonight, knowing it doesn't commit you to anything further necessarily. We can come back to Cas, with Casell and you can say no, and we can continue to use Munis for the financial functions and then do the front counter functions in Trio. So that, that's a, that's a viable option moving forward.
I get, I'm going to steal a statement that Council Blanchett used earlier and apply it here is, I'm not comfortable rushing into a partially developed plan for our software for the city, given the, the amount of dollars. I understand the need to get it up and running, and if we're going to get it, it has to be purchased quickly. But without knowing what the complete package looks like, is code going to have this system? And then are we going to have three different systems? How will they tie together? What is the actual cost? Are we going to move forward with, with Casell? It, to me, it's, it's too chopped up, and it would be making a decision that is not well-grounded in the full picture. And that's a risk. And so I, for me, I'm not comfortable approving a piece of it when we don't know what the, the full picture looks like.
I'm not sure I can, I don't, this might sound flippant, but it doesn't really matter. The, I don't mean it, I don't mean it to. So they're all going to inter, they're all going to operate independently each, each other, right? So the fact that we're doing Trio for these certain functions, and these other departments are doing their functions in Munis or Casell or whatever, it's not going to change the fact that there's going to be a process to integrate them together. It doesn't, it doesn't really change anything, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I'm just trying to think of how I can better explain that. But by doing these things with Trio, we know what we want to do with Trio. There's no, there's no wishy-washy or questioning on that. The questioning is on the other side. Is Casell going to be used for code? Is OpenGov going to be used for code? Those don't really change the fact that we want to use Trio out front. And they, they integrate, all of them will integrate together fine. It's not, it's not a complex integration, I guess, in other words. It's really more just about entering journal entries at the end of the day about what your transactions were in Trio into Munis. So it's not, it doesn't really matter, is what I'm trying to say. I just don't know how to necessarily put it in a non-technical terms, but.
Council Hallen.
Could you share with us perhaps what benefits the employees would receive? Is their daily life going to be better in taking this one step at a time?
Do you want to speak to that? You don't have to, I can talk. She's used both, so.
I'm just wondering.
Tony Dyer, City Clerk. So I used Trio in my previous town. And from a forward-facing perspective, I will tell you that if you wanted to compare Jason coming in to do his simple dog license renewal in Munis, he's going to be standing out here with me in Munis for probably 20 minutes. Logistically, the system does not make sense in doing a dog license. I could do his renewal in Trio in under five minutes and he's out the door. In addition, I think there's going to be a benefit to your taxpayers if our tax and clerk departments, who many have used Trio, you may not have to make two checks out to do this transaction and a dog license. If we can do some cross-training, you might be able to come in and pay your real estate taxes and do your dog license with me and not have to see our tax collector. taxes and do your dog license with me and not have to see our tax collector write one check, come see me and write a second check. So your taxpayers are going to see a significant change in the efficiency of their business while making the employees' daily transactions much easier, much more integrated. Many clerk and tax functions, like inland fisheries licenses, we do in a program called Moses. It integrates right into Trio. There's no manual entering licenses and putting the wrong dollar figure in Munis. And then we have to figure out at the end of the month why there's a difference in our general ledger accounting. So yes, it will be easier. There's more integration. And to speak to Chair Hamilton's concern, I don't think we're jumping in to something that we haven't researched. Manager Moser made the Software Committee of members of various departments. We have vetted these programs several times. And we've really put a lot of time and effort into this. And regardless of if we choose to stay with Munis for financials or Casell or a little of OpenGov and whatever, Trio has not changed. And Software Committee as a whole thinks that it's the best option for the forward-facing transactions that are done citywide.
And you said that the programs will talk to each other and...
Yes.
...integrate the information so that if somebody's doing a transaction in Munis, that information will integrate automatically or you have to manually enter it into Trio?
It will be a manual process. There's a possibility of automating it. But initially at least, depending on what we're going to... You know, if we don't know we're staying with Munis or whatever, we wouldn't automate it. But if we... What it comes down to is essentially, there's going to be transactions in Trio. Your financials are all tracked in Munis or will be. So what you're doing is taking those financial transactions out of Trio and doing those entries into Munis at the end of the day. That's a manual process, but it's straightforward. It's a quick data entry going down through a list of accounts that have been changed.
And how much is that going to cost in labor cost to have somebody manually entering that information from one program to the next versus having something that automatically integrates it?
It's only minutes anyway, but...
It'll be limited. And as I stated with a dog license example, I'll be saving 15 minutes in time doing a dog license in Trio versus Munis, which is the 15 minutes that I might spend doing my journal entries at the end of the night for the entire clerk's department. And if I did seven dog transactions that day at 15 minutes of savings each, I think it's a huge labor savings. And the clerk's department has plenty of other work to be doing aside from spending 20 minutes on a dog renewal. So I think it'd be very limited, and I think you'd actually have more efficiency and ability to get some of those other tasks done that often, as any business is, that get put aside because you have more urgent tasks.
Here's what I found.
Was that Munis?
That's Casell.
And what about public self-service abilities, like with the rapid renewal?
Trio is a very main-specific. They have support right out of Bangor. So when you call them for support, you're not talking to someone in California like you are with Tyler. They're very main-specific. They have all the motor vehicle already done. In my experience, in my previous town, I think it's actually much more efficient than what we're doing right now with Munis and trying to link everything together. So the clerk's department now will have a huge push, if we were to go with Trio, to be pushing for those dog licenses online because it's very integrated. They've worked very hard to make that efficient through the state of Maine.
And motor vehicle rapid renewals will still be easy and...
Motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, and hunting and fishing licenses, they're super easy to integrate with Trio.
And from the end user, those are done on the state's website anyway, so you won't see a change. It'll look the same.
Councilwoman Blanchett.
For nine years, I've heard nothing but complaints about Munis many times a year, to the point that I realized that Munis was the last name. The first name, well, the initial was F from most of the employees. I recall an update two summers ago, over a weekend. It was a major update. It was no problem. It would be done on a Saturday. You guys came in. It was the update from hell. It went well into the next week, and to this day, I don't think it ever loaded correctly.
That's part of the issue. One of the other issues with Munis is their update process is cumbersome, to put it kindly.
The other issue is what?
It's a cumbersome update process.
You're being polite.
Yes. So to put it kindly, it's cumbersome.
From what I hear about Trio, to me, it sounds like a... That it'll work. You, I trust. Munis, not so much. So if it's user-friendly for the employee and it gets the resident in and out of here faster, then let's do it.
I think an important thing to keep in mind is it really is designed for the smallest town with one clerk. I mean, it is designed with ease of use in mind. I mean, it really has to be. For towns without... Even these towns don't have IT, you know, within three days before they're waiting for their contract IT to get there. So it has to be a system that they can depend on. So it was designed that way.
Could it cut positions and like the city government?
Probably.
Not that good?
Probably not that good.
Well, you said they don't have IT.
Well, give it a shot.
He did say that.
He did.
In terms of the... So as the module, so if you go with Trio, you'll scale back on Munis?
Yes.
Where does that data... You don't need to retain the licenses. That data preserved? How do you retain that so that you have access?
So...
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Like where's the data in Munis going to be once we move forward with Trio?
Yeah. Do you have to, I guess, is it... Do they export that in a usable format? Do you have to transfer it over into the new system?
Yes. Well, so yes and yes. So Trio is going to bring forward tax account balances. A lot of the history, or all of the history, won't be coming over. So we will be doing a manual process where we archive that history in a different format. So we're not going to be relying on Munis to exist to look at that historical data. So Trio is pulling over customer account balances as they are, and then the historical stuff will be archiving separately. So it's a two-part process, two-part answer.
And how long will we hold on to the full Munis? Do you need to...
I don't know what legally... I mean, well, for the full Munis, it depends on when or if we get rid of Munis. If we end up keeping it, that data can just exist in the database forever. But most likely, if we go to Casell or an OpenGov, it won't stick around long. We'll get out of there what we can, and then it'll be gone. Because what's going to happen is there's going to be an update to Windows Server or something like that, and it's going to stop working. So we need to be sure we have anything out of there that we need as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the request of the Finance Director to purchase the Trio software from Harris Local Government in the amount of $60,290.85. Funding for the project to come from the...
Account number 170-52049. And that is... Those funds are from surplus funds returned by the School Department.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion second. Further discussion. All those in favor? You can answer.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to make a motion to Table 14?
So moved.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor to table item 14? Unanimous. Item 14 is tabled. Item 15, Council Order Number 011003, Request of the Fire Chief to Apply for FEMA Grant for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Responsible Career Firefighter.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council, thank you. I come to you today to ask or request to apply for the FEMA Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. This grant opened up on January 3rd. We didn't receive notification until after Christmas that it was opening, which is why it was not presented in December. This year, in years past, the Safer Grant was a cost-share program for staffing. This year is a zero-cost share. The program will allow us to add additional firefighters to our force downstairs. The period of performance is for three years. At that point, the city would take on the additional funding at the end of three years. What we're looking at is if we are awarded the grant, the period of performance starts up to 180 days after we are awarded it. The award looks like it's going to be in the summer of '22, which means we would have upwards until January of '23 to hire personnel. We're only requesting three. With that being said, the three years from that point would put us past... Would put us past the point that we're talking about potentially getting into the EMS environment.
Scott, what was the last part?
The EMS.
Okay. Thank you.
While we haven't made a decision yet as to whether we're going to pursue that or not, what we're seeing downstairs on the floor, and I'll use today for an example, the shift that's on today is supposed to be a five-person shift. Today, it's down to three. That is not enough firefighters. They can't do any firefighting as soon as they roll out the door. There is two-in, two-out rules that say that I have to have two interior firefighters inside a building, and I have to have two firefighters outside. That's four people, not including the pump operator. So that's five people. I've got three guys on the floor right now. I have five paid-on-call members, and only two are interior certified. I can't guarantee they're going to be there. So we're at an extreme need where I need bodies on the floor. I've shared with you some data. The call volume has dramatically increased over the past eight years, tremendously. This year, we did... We closed out 2021 1,619 calls. Over 1,200 of those were EMS-related calls. That's not going away. And every year, as you can see, it has gone up every year with the number EMS responses. Fire responses have stayed about the same. But when we added EMS to the system, our call volume is now going up and up and up. So my request is to do... Is to add three additional firefighters to the floor. And hopefully, that will help us in the future as putting people there.
This is a three-year grant?
Yes, sir. It's three years.
And then after that?
After that, the city would look at taking on those salaries. So what the Safer Grant covers is it covers the salaries, it covers the FLSA overtime, but it doesn't cover the additional overtime that's related to. So if they came in and worked an overtime shift to cover a sick day, the Safer Grant wouldn't cover that. But right now, we're already paying... We're paying a tremendous amount of overtime because we don't have the staffing.
So it would be three years from now, roughly, you call it $250,000 additional?
Yeah, roughly.
The EMS is really what's driving this need.
I know.
The personnel, you know, when you have two people going out on an EMS call, and you have... Even if you have four on staff, that only leaves you two. And we've had multiple situations where we've had multiple EMS calls, and we've got our entire fire crew going out in separate directions for EMS calls at the same time, leaving us literally no, you know, no fire protection. So as we continue to provide that service and as... Certainly, as we look to maybe expand the level at which we provide that service, the additional personnel is absolutely mandatory.
I think just... It's pretty instructive in terms of if you look at 2016, 27 calls for EMS. And in 2021, 1,251 calls. If you go to 2018, it was up to 121. But you can see the difference. And I just think it's important for the community to have those numbers, that it's a dramatic increase that is going to continue whether we are doing... Providing EMS services as a city or not. That trend is very clear.
And this was largely driven by the licensing because you guys are EMS or basic?
Correct.
And in order to maintain that license, you had to send a firefighter or an EMS-certified person on every single call...
Correct.
Versus giving up that license.
Correct.
And the reason that we were looking at the EMS service itself is because of the wait times...
Correct.
...for EMS services, advanced life services.
Correct. So again, if we take a look, part of that supports... We're 94 square miles. We run... We have some shifts that could potentially be staffed up to five people based on what you guys have done in the past for us. We cover 94 square miles. If I put one engine all the way to the other side over at the Dedham Line, and then I have another call downtown, and there's no one there to respond, how... What do we say to the public? It's hard. And we've added additional... We cover Fletcher's Landing. That's an additional 15 more square miles that we covered. And that adds additional 15 calls per year. It's what the average is. So the call volume is going to keep continuing to go up, and we could have an engine on one side of town and then be split by having another call over here. And, you know, a month ago, we had a crew out on Mariahville Road handling an incident, and we had a car fire almost at the Dedham Line. And it was a 15-minute response for them to get out there because they had to leave there to go there. Now, the nature of the business is we can only handle one call at a time. But when we're at such a... When our crew is so reduced at that point, then that's a long time to wait when something's happening. Now, that's where a fire... What happens with a medical emergency? They've got to wait 15 minutes and then add waiting for EMS transport, whomever's coming.
And FEMA doesn't require the city to continue at past the three? That's... There's not a... Is there an obligation?
No.
So it provides... I know one of the arguments would be, well, if you bring sap on, you'll never let him go. But it gives us three years of paid support and for us to be able to collect data to determine, do we need those positions or not?
Correct.
And that's the reality, is that three years from now, that assessment can take place to determine whether that's needed. But it provides us with funding to do that.
Correct.
Councilwoman Blanchett.
And part of the reason that this just seems to make sense to me because we were already looking at doing EMS service because of the incident that happened with a patient who lived less than a half a mile from the fire department. And the fire department at that time was not able to respond because of agreements with a certain ambulance company. And that call was dispatched incorrectly, and that patient waited 45 minutes and ultimately bled to death when she lived only a half a mile from the fire station. And that's why we're looking at doing the EMS in the first place. And so this is something we're already considering. It just seems to make sense to me.
Councilwoman Blanchett.
Chief, do we have the room to house them?
Currently, we do. We've made... We've taken what was utilized before for the private service that was here. We've taken and we've reorganized that bunk room to be able to support that.
Can you make those bunk rooms, you know, so small?
Yes.
So you're going to have height requirements or...
I think we've already waived the height requirements.
Okay. I just, you know, wanted to make sure that we didn't hit a snag down the road that, oh, damn, we didn't think of this.
Councilman Miller.
And also, three years from now, hopefully, we will be starting an ambulance service where we can have some revenue to help pay for these firefighters ourselves as well.
If that's what we decide to do, yes, sir.
Yes, yes. And we are currently paying a service right now, too, which is only going to go up in the future as well.
Correct.
Move to approve the request of a fire chief to apply for FEMA grant for staffing for adequate fire and emergency personnel of career firefighters.
Second.
Your motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
And your, the next item, item 16, council order number 011004, request of fire chief to apply for a FEMA grant for staffing for adequate fire and emergency response for the recruitment and retention of volunteer firefighters.
So much is the same as the last item for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. When we went through the hiring process with me, you made it very, very clear that you wanted to rebuild the paid-on-call force of the fire department. We're slowly working at it. I've added two here in the past, well, I added two this weekend. I have another one currently that we're working on and they will all go to the fire academy in the spring. There's costs that are associated with every person that we bring through, there's a cost that's associated with it. So much is the same is, this is the same grant, but this is geared specifically for the recruitment and retention of volunteers. And that means that it allows us to build out a program that involves both onboarding. It includes giving them physicals, it includes buying turnout gear for them. Turnout gear is roughly about $3,000 a set. It also includes training them, which should mean sending them to the academy, sending them to EMT training if we so deem it. All that money, whatever, whatever we set up in the budget, FEMA will reimburse us that, those monies that we spend on the volunteer or what we do for the marketing aspect. If we decide we're going to do a robust marketing plan to recruit these, these volunteers into our system, they will reimburse us for the monies that we spent based on what we set up for a marketing plan. And just to give you the history from when I went through the hiring process, I just came out of a system where I was the recruitment and retention coordinator for a county fire service. We were operating with a $910,000 grant over a period of four years to, to bring on 80 volunteer firefighters. When I left, we had already brought on, brought on approximately 40 in a two-and-a-half-year period, sustained. We had onboarded probably 75, 75 to 80, but we retained about 40 of them between two, two different departments. So it's a valuable asset when the federal government is offering us the opportunity to help offset the cost of what it costs to bring a volunteer on. And so what I would like to do, and there's, there's two ways that we can go about this. We can do it as a sole source entity as, as Ellsworth Fire Department. Or we can do a regionalized grant with the surrounding volunteer communities. Because FEMA is looking very highly at regionalized grants. And so to be able to bring on Trenton and Lemoine and Surrey and Hancock into the mix would allow us a better opportunity to do a, a more in-depth recruitment process for everybody, which means when we need help, we have the resources to do so. Whether it's mutual aid departments coming in with better trained and more personnel or for our own, us as an entity, having more available personnel being able to respond to these calls that we don't have now.
Councilor Hallen.
In your experience, does this money flow freely from the federal government? Or are we going to hear about that they were supposed to do this and didn't do it?
No, there, there's a process. You do a, a reimbursement request and as long as you meet all the criteria and submit all the information back to them, they, they will reimburse you your amount that you spent.
Is this a three-year program like the first one we talked about?
It can be anywhere from two years to four years, depending on what they award you for. So typically the regionalized grants, they can be up to four years that they will cover.
Councilor.
And this motion is just to apply for the grant, right?
Yes.
And there's going to be 500 grants awarded?
Roughly, but the way these grants are awarded is, is there are certain percentages that are allotted to vol, straight volunteer departments. There are certain amounts that are awarded to combination departments and there are certain amounts, well, it wouldn't involve career departments because they don't have volunteers. But it's percentage-based. And so the biggest thing that they're looking for is those regionalized where you've got a large community base that's looking to increase their, their volunteer base.
And the total budgeted amount for all the grants combined is 560 million?
Correct.
Now, will it be divided up based on the cost for a specific region? Or for example, a firefighter coming on in, let's say, Long Island, New York is going to be a lot more expensive than a firefighter coming on in Ellsworth?
It's not reg, it's not regionalized as far as what the cost, what the cost is going to be, if that's what you're asking. So, no, it's very specific is that they are going by what you, what you establish in your budget. And that's, that's how they typically award it. And so they may reduce the amount that you requested for, depends on how peer review goes when they review that application.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the request for the fire chief to apply for a FEMA grant for staffing for adequate fire and emergency response for recruitment and retention of volunteer firefighters.
Second.
Your motion is second. Further discussion? Councilor Blanchett?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm one step ahead.
Seeing no further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 17, council order number 01.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we get on to that, we've got three lengthy discussion items coming up. And I see the people from the Maine Organics are here. Rather than put them through three more lengthy, could we move their item up to the next item?
You're assuming they're not enjoying themselves. I wouldn't want it to, no, if all the, you want to make a motion of that, then we can formally move it?
That was the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of moving that item up to the next item to be discussed? Unanimous. So we are now discussing what is on our agenda. Number 20, discussion about the odor coming from Maine Organics 13 Industrial Road to Ellsworth affecting all of the industrial park businesses. Turn it over to Councilor O'Halloran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shortly after I was elected to the council, I had several businesses complaining to me about the odor coming from the Maine Organics farm, if you will, of lack of a better term. And I reached out to Josh Wellman in front of a couple of them that were at my office complaining and said, look, I, I want to put this on the agenda for a discussion. And really, what I am looking for is some balance between the odor affecting the other businesses in that area. And I, I don't want to cause anybody any harm, okay? So in, in Maine Organics' case, I'm sure they've invested monies and I'm sure that they've had challenges and et cetera and problems. And I'm new to this council and I thought it was worthy of a discussion. And my, my position is this, I, you know, if, if this were farmland in Pennsylvania, it would be more accepting than this quote-unquote "new" Maine Organics that has moved in beside these other businesses. I'm not looking for a solution tomorrow. I'm not looking to hurt anybody. I'm just looking to maybe find some ways through discussion that this could be handled a little differently. You know, with a plan that, again, you know, is there, can we somehow find a plan that, that this could be a balancing act among those businesses there in the next year or two? Not, we don't want to, in my opinion, we don't want to harm anybody. But it appears that I've had enough people come at me about this that it's certainly an issue. So I, I thought it made sense to bring this for a discussion and hopefully find a way to balance Maine Organics' interests with the other interest in that park and stop trying to hurt, or not trying to hurt, but stop causing hurt through this process. I don't know if that's possible, but the last thing we want to do is, or that I want to do, is cause harm to Maine Organics in, in trying to satisfy the other businesses. There's got to be some sort of a solution to the problem.
Let's see what they have to say.
Well, could I finish?
Well, yeah, you can.
Thank you.
Geez, you kept repeating yourself, Steve.
I can't drive that point home enough.
Yes, you can.
That I, I just don't want to cause harm to you people. But at the same time, causing harm to other businesses is problematic. You okay?
Are you done? Thanks. Then I am fine.
Okay, so I'm, I'm Connor Wellman with Maine Organics, I'm Josh Wellman's son. He couldn't be here tonight. And this is my grandfather, Mike Wellman, here with Maine, Maine Organics as well. So as far as the odor goes, I guess I'll just go over what we've done so far. So basically, our, first I'll say the, I think the odor definitely comes from both the sludge compost and the seafood compost. I don't think it comes from just, you know, the sludge or the seafood. And what we've started to do lately, probably in the past three to four months, is we've, we've gotten sawdust from Pleasant River lumber, pine sawdust to basically cover our windrows. And I think that it's, it's definitely helped. And just recently, in the past two weeks, I've gotten actual wood chips from Eagle Arbiculture in Trenton. And those seem to work a lot better because they're actually already cooking, so they smell, they smell good. And if the piles, if the piles go untouched and they're covered, I don't believe that there's, there's any odor. But where, where the odor comes from is when, you know, we're composting, so we have to, we have to break the piles open, we have to screen them. When we mix the compost, you know, it smells. And, you know, it's a, it's a compost yard and we're going to have some odor. But we're definitely working, you know, to, you know, lessen the odor. And in the, in the future, I think what we're going to look into is setting up an odor control system along the woods line of our neighbors. Of course, we need, we have to look into the, what it's going to cost us, but I, I think that would probably eliminate the odor.
Councilor.
If it comes to that.
I was driving a friend of my son's on the Mariahville Road and I caught a whiff of something on the way out, but when I dropped this friend off coming back, the, the odor just driving by was enough to bring watering eyes and I literally was gagging. It smells like you left your seafood out in the summer in your garbage bag and the, like, the worst smell I've ever smelled. But that was specifically at about like five-ish in the evening, four, five in the evening.
Yeah.
And is that the time of day that you're turning this stuff or?
It depends. So what, what we've started, I mean, we'd probably be doing it now for, I want to say, five months. We, you know, whichever way the wind's blowing kind of depends on what we're going to do. So if the wind's blowing away from the industrial road, that's when we try to mix or, or flip our piles. Because you can, you know, there's no, there's nobody up the industrial road a ways. I've never, I've never smelt it up, up to where the first house is on, on the 180.
Yeah, no, this is just me driving by.
Yeah. Yeah, and you're going to, and you're going to smell it. I mean, we could have been flipping a seafood pile, we could have been mixing that day. And the wind was blowing towards 180.
Could it be done at night when the other businesses are closed?
That's been looked at. Yeah, we've, we've thought about that.
So I think, Councilor O'Halloran, like you, I, I think it's a good point. It's, it's, it's one of these, I think it's worth the discussion because it's a complex issue. It's not unlike noise issues that we hear. You know, it's, it's that balance always of just trying to create a, a city and supporting the different types of businesses and residents and, and, and striking that. And I'm hearing that you're, you've recently implemented some changes that you're, it sounds like you're very open to that kind of feedback and and hearing from the, the community in terms of taking steps and seeing if those work. And I think like anything, it can't happen necessarily overnight, but it's that progressive and openness to have a conversation with the surrounding community. And, and I'm hearing that you're open to that, that kind of ongoing dialogue.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
But literally overnight is, you know, if the other businesses are closed at night and the peak smell comes when it's turned and screened, perhaps switching your hours to evening hours when the other businesses are closed would provide relief for them but keep you in business?
Yeah, and we've definitely looked into that, doing all of our mixing, screening, you know, flipping the windrows at, at night. The only thing I would worry about is, you know, if, I mean, I guess the smell could linger into the day. But anytime that our piles have been windrode and covered with either the sawdust from Pleasant River lumber or the, now the wood chips from Trenton, it's really not much odor. I mean, it's very minimal. So.
Mike Harris, Ellsworth Waste Water. So I just want to shed a little bit of light on this subject because I actually had a meeting with Glenn and Josh Wellman, the owner. So what you're really talking about here is two, two issues that you're having here. Two things that they primarily dealing, deal with up there is bio-solids that come from my plant and seafood that at the beginning was just from Maine shellfish. But now their seafood waste intake is grown exponentially, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So where they used to take Maine shellfish stuff and they'd do a 30-yard container, let's say, a week?
Yes.
Now they're doing a 30-yard container a day. Okay, now anybody that's been by Maine shellfish in the summertime, especially in years past when they weren't disposing of their stuff very well, knows that it smells awful. So part of what happened when they built the compost facility is one of the benefits of that compost facility being built, other than taking our bio-solids, is that they stopped Maine shellfish from dumping their shellfish waste at our transfer station, which smelled awful and destroyed our compactors over time because it's very corrosive. So there's two things there. One, the smell that they're smelling now is probably more prevalent, but it was always there at the transfer station. We've just transferred it from the transfer station, or part of it, to the compost facility and saved the city's transfer station from smelling awful and destroying its compactors. The second thing you need to look at in, is that when you make compost, you basically need what we send or waste product from sea, that they use from the seafood companies. And you need a carbon source, which in, in, in their case, they were using sawdust shavings from Jackson Lab. That was the other benefit of them opening their compost facility here in Ellsworth is that saved, saved Jackson Lab from having to ship it to Unity and they were able to beneficially reuse it at the compost facility in Ellsworth. The issue that you have along with the odor is birds. Well, it turns out, the shavings that they get from Well, it turns out, the shavings that they get from Jackson Lab are from the mousepens and they feed the mice, and the mice, but they feed the mice, some of it is grain. Apparently seagulls are very fond of grain. So when they were covering their piles with sawdust from, well, the shavings from Maine shellfish, the birds would have a feel that. They loved it. So Josh said, one of the things they've looked at and they're doing is they have noise makers up there that were specifically designed to scare birds away. They fly fake falcons up there to try and keep the birds away, and they're actually looking at hiring a falcon or to bring a real falcon up there. And then they're also at some point possibly looking at putting a monofillament grid over it so the birds can't get to it. So that's very proactive on their part. And then in terms of the odors from the compost facility itself, from the seafood or from the bio-solids, they've started bringing in sawdust and other products from other sources that doesn't contain grain to be able to cover this stuff and not have the birds flock to it to help contain the odors. But what he's saying is very correct because what they're composting is waste and it smells. Not all the time, but definitely in the process of making compost, there's going to be times when there is an odor that is generated. Not unlike transfer facilities, not unlike dumps. I mean, I remember driving up 95 by the Colbrook exit and just thinking, Jesus, what did I just run into? Because they had the open landfill there. And so I think we're all very clear that the city doesn't have an odor ordinance. DEP has to take care of it, it's a DEP licensed facility. And I think they're making efforts and continuing to make efforts to resolve the issue, but I don't think we're ever going to get to a baseline point where there's no odor there. So I just want to be very clear about that. Also, I believe it's their intent not to take our bio-solids after this contract over, contract's over. Right?
Right, yeah.
Which is a very big problem for us, just so you know. Because the other facility in Maine that composts is also looking at shutting down over PFOS issues, which I don't want to bore you with the details on, but there's a constituent in bio-solids that has caused problems in Fairfield and Arundel. And the problem that compost companies are having is now that that's become a public issue, people are more reluctant to use their product because mainly what this compost is used for is construction companies. Somebody comes in, they do a major road project and they have to replant medians and things like that, they take compost from a facility like this, they bring it, they mix it with sand and whatever, make loom out of it, and they use it in the medians to plant, replant grass and stuff because it grows great. The stuff is amazing when it comes to growing anything. So just to put it on your radar, I think they're making good faith effort, and I wanted to be able to step up here and say that to you because I met with the city manager and I met with Josh Wellman, and I wanted to make sure I covered everything else they're doing because not all of it was covered. And also to let you know that we need to figure out what we're going to do with our stuff then. Because we produce a lot and it's a huge revenue stream for the city. So. Anybody has any questions?
For another day.
Yeah.
Councilor Hall. I just would like to ask, is there a happy medium other than, is there, like, I went to your facility, the wastewater facility, and there's less smell there than there is at this composting facility. Now maybe that's con, okay? But is there a chemical that can be used? Is there a, and furthermore, it was stated, and I read earlier, that you had elected not to renew your contract with the city of Ellsworth. Is that going to reduce some of the smell? And is this harming you? Why, is that harming?
Is it, is it harming us still?
To eliminate the city of Ellsworth contract, what is that going to do?
If you stop taking sludge?
Yeah, when you stop taking the city's sludge, is that, is that going to cure a problem?
Uh, no, because we're still going to have smell from the seafood compost.
Okay, okay.
You know?
Is it going to, is it going to help us?
Yeah. But, yeah, even if, even if it was just, even if all we composted was seafood, we're still going to have some, some odor. But we're just trying to minimize it as much as we can.
And the reason to stop taking the city's comp, material?
Bio-solids.
Yeah, thank you.
People call it sludge, but it's not sludge.
Okay, all right. Well, the reason for stopping taking that is, it's not a helpful product, it's hard for you to market because it's human waste?
Yeah, it's definitely, it's going to, I think, it's going to become harder to, to sell with, you know, with the PFOS and, but I, I guess that could change, it could.
I mean, basically, it's a, it's a business decision for them at this point. They don't want to be stuck with piles of compost that they can't move because people don't want to buy it. So if at some point something comes along that helps them market it better and they can, then Josh said there's a possibility they'd stay in the market. The other point I would make is if they were to stay in the market, but we said, hey, we're not going to send it to you because we don't want to contribute to the odor problems, they're going to take it from somebody else. Because there's people knocking on their door right now trying to get there. But they're not taking it because they don't know what's going to happen with the PFOS issue. So they're only taking ours. But Bar Harbor would love to go there, right?
Yes, they would.
So.
But you have concerns that it's, it's a troubled market for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As, as of, you know, right now, and that's what, you know, the future looks like it entails.
And then the last thing I would say is the ultimate solution that would be probably the best fix, the issue with it, is the cost. Because for you to put an odor control system on that operation would be, my best guess, half a mil to a million to contain that odor. Because what it entails, cover everything? It would cover everything, you would have ductwork inside that pulls all the air out of the building that's covered, puts it through a chemical process to strip the hydrogen sulfide and other mercaptins chemicals out of it, and then discharge the clean air into the atmosphere. But just, it's an exorbitant amount of money. So I just wanted to, but you know, yes, there is a, probably a solution that's viable for removing odors or greatly reducing it. But it would probably put them out of it.
So Mike, just a side note, I hope the school board's paying attention because I think we just found our next science teacher, that would be you. And thank you for, for coming in and presenting. I, I think it's, it's, it was good to have the discussion. I think we're, as a council at this point anyway, somewhat limited in terms of any action anyway, but it's good to have the issue out there and knowing that there's willingness to discuss.
The other side.
Oh, okay. Sorry. No, I didn't realize. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Wallace and I'm on the downwind side of this. I have a huge investment in this town and it's killing my business. The smell is horrible. I don't care what time, you talk about only when the piles aren't turned over. I went there Saturday night at seven o'clock and was sitting to my stomach at my door. That's not right. I've gone all the avenues, I've been to the council, I've been to the DEP, I've been to everybody, I see no change in what's going on. The smell is horrible. My grandkids won't even come to my business because they don't want to deal with the smell. They only want to get out of the car. Your clothes stink, your vehicles stink. It's not right. I'm sorry, but it just is not. And if I'm on the, and I guess I'm on the downward side of it because I get it every single day. It might not be every hour, but I get it. The birds are horrible, so they shoot them off, they fly around, and they shit on everything. Vehicles, buildings, whatever there is. The other issue is rats. I have a extermination company, have had there for 20 years. They are going up on my costs because they are having to increase their stuff to keep the rats out of my building. I don't feel that that's something that needs to be in a city area with this smell. You can't drive up 180 and you smell it, it's a nasty smell. It really is nasty. I don't know where else to turn, how else to go, I guess that's why I'm here, but it's not very good. And, you know, the DEP guy told me the other day, he comes down, he says, yes, you don't smell it all the time, but when you smell it, it is foul. And when you go home and it's in your clothes, in your vehicle, I, I have a, I store household furniture in there. If I have your furniture in my building, do you want it smelling like that? No. We keep, we make efforts to keep the doors closed because of all this. We still have the smell, you know? I have customers that will come to my building and get out of their car and say, oh my God, what is this smell? I have a rental property and they are a wireless communication company. They do a lot of work outside to prepare their site towers. They're not doing it, they're doing it inside just because of the smell or at their other facility that they have here in the state. I would like not to see change in a year from now, I would like to see it soon. It's been going on long enough for this. I don't see any difference between the Jackson Lab, so I haven't seen, I don't see any difference. I really don't in the smell. It's, it's horrible. And I don't think you would want it in your backyard either. But if it requires that they have to build a filtration system, then why shouldn't they? Because it's affecting everybody else in there.
Councilor Hall.
I would, I don't know really what I'm reading here, but it talks about the business park, 801 dot three, where dust, fumes, vapors, gases, odors, glare, or explosive materials are not acceptable. Now, I don't know what I'm reading, okay? But it appears that there is perhaps some protection for the other businesses. And my question is that...
We'd be in violation ourselves with having the transfer station up there.
Well, before you even go that far, are you, is that referring to the commerce park or the industrial park?
It says business park.
That's what I think is the commerce park.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just, when he said, yeah, you may be right.
Well, I'm, I'm here to, I'm here to tell you.
I'm pretty sure that's the commerce park.
Well, okay.
I don't want you quoting something that's not going to...
And I'm not quoting, I said from the beginning that, you know, I don't know what I'm reading here. But is there any thought of you eliminating this over time? Do you see yourself operating this in three years?
Uh, yes.
You do? This is a viable thing for you?
It is, yeah, for sure.
Okay. And, and do you see yourself, and I'll be honest, I drive by this place twice a day, and in the last two years, I've seen a drastic change. But I just drive by it, it doesn't bother me, but if I had a business beside it, that would bother me. What, do you see yourself fixing the problem or do you see yourself just band-aiding it?
Uh, yes, we definitely want to fix the problem, but it's, at this point, we're kind of, like Mike said, we're going to have to put in the whole, a whole odor control system. And it's, you know, rather costly.
And you don't see yourself doing it?
So if it, just because anybody watching, they can't hear unless you're at the mic. Thank you.
And my apologies.
Um, no, I'm definitely not, I'm not saying that we wouldn't do that.
What would it take to get you to?
That's something that we would have to, to look into.
Like, I don't think you guys have even did a ball podcast or anything on that yet, have you?
No. No, we haven't.
So in your mind, the business is viable and you want it to be there, but we haven't looked at being a good move?
Right, yeah, that would be the next step at this point, is to go to the odor control.
Are you willing to do that?
Uh, that's something that we'd have to, to look into in, in installing.
I don't think he's going to be able to answer that question for you because I think his dad is the one who's going to have to answer that question.
Yeah.
His dad's not here, so.
That's, that's something that, like, what I'm saying is that that's, that's something that we haven't really, like, researched that in depth, we'd have to, you know, it's something that we'd have to look into. So.
My name's Ted Williams, I have Fat Dog LLC. Most people just know it's Williams Irrigation Systems, but I actually have three other tenants up there. Kevin's not wrong. It's disgusting. Councilor Hamilton, I believe you agreed, you came up in the parking lot, took a smell up there. You've seen it, you've smelled it driving by. Everybody in this, everybody sitting up there, if you actually took the time to drive over there and smell that when they're mixing and when they've taken fresh loads, it's ridiculous. I've been talking with his dad and texting him for, since 2019, nothing has changed. It'll get better for a week or two, whatever they're doing, and then they'll mix the piles, take another load. It's disgusting. And everybody knows it. We're barking, we're up in an uphill battle because clearly it's a benefit to the city to drop their material there. But it's not fair for the rest of the businesses up there. I've been up there for 11 years and I'm going to move. I'm done with it. It's disgusting, you know it, you've never, ever, you won't even acknowledge that it smells most of the time. I've been in contact with the DEP, you know, I talked to the previous city manager about it, he agreed to a smell, he's gone. I've tried to respond, get ahold of Glenn about it, nothing's really happened there. But it's really time because, you know, it's not fair for everybody that's been up there for years, these guys to move in and make that smell. It's not the place for a compost facility. Whoever made that decision, I mean, I'm very well versed in what they're trying to do. I have a degree in natural resources, in land use planning, and my senior project was all soil science and compost. I know what they're trying to do, it's not the place for it. And, yeah, I mean, I think at this point, you kind of know it. But, I, I mean, there's no way to remediate that kind of smell. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, but it's been ignored long enough. And the rest of us cannot emit odors out of those lots up there. That's part of the ordinance in those lots. Whether they're part of that or not, they still have the same address as the rest of us on Dust River Road. So I just, it, it's time to have something done about it. It's time to move on. I mean, these guys, you've tried different recipes, I get it, I don't want anybody to... I'm with Steve, I, I don't think, you know, I don't want to see a business get harmed. You've obviously used a lot of investments, you've used a lot of grants to get that going, and it's, maybe it's just not going to work. Maybe you have to change your materials, maybe you can't take a certain input. But it's just, it's ridiculous. You ought to have a little mercy on your neighbors. Thanks.
Councilor Hall.
Ted, Ted, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So before the compost, with the transfer station there, what was the comparison?
There is no comparison whatsoever. I mean, I could count on one hand the amount of times I could smell that dump being a problem up there, the transfer station. There is, there's no comparison. There is, there's no comparison.
I had a call last summer and I actually went up, drove up, and one of the businesses had some cars they work on. And they had to take the car to Harman's because of the birds. It was outside for one hour after they worked on it. They had to go down to Harman's and wash the car for the guy that came to get it because he was appalled by it. So that day, I drove up 180 and it smelled. I went over to 179, drove up, and drove up to Harrop Jones' pit. You could smell it in the middle of the pit. So I decided, I went down to the trailhead of the Sunrise Trail and I could smell it there. And at Gerard Goodwin's pit in Franklin, I could smell it there.
It's, the smell lingers.
I don't know if it's just certain days, but that was carrying-
It's really the certain days, the cold, heavy, like, the worst part is in this time of the year. The cold mornings and still air. You, I mean, you can't breathe. My, my bookkeeper won't come in. She comes in, grabs all the stuff and takes it back to her house and works remotely because you can't, it's that bad in the building. You get in your truck after it's been sitting there. I mean, it's days. It's not real easy to drive around with your windows down in the truck trying to air it out this time of year. The birds, I took a picture the other day of the birds. There's no exaggeration. There had to be 200 seagulls out there. I sent it to the DEP. I sent it over to Paul Secord because everybody just ignores the problem. But it's, you know, it's really, it's ridiculous. You have several other businesses up there that shouldn't have to deal with that. You can smell it at the Meyer Field easily. I mean, there's been multiple complaints about that, so.
And another business up there told me they had to shingle their roof because it rotted the shingles, the birds.
You know, if it was, I could deal with the bird shit if it wasn't for the smell. But it just really doesn't help the situation at all.
Councilor Hamilton.
I'd just like to, to point out one thing about this is that I think that the businesses in the industrial park have been dealt a pretty significant blow. And, and I, I say it in this fashion. And maybe there's an exception to this rule. But the city sold these lots to these businesses. And they developed their businesses, probably one of them is yours. Maybe, maybe you didn't buy it from the city. Maybe you bought it second-
I did. I bought it from the second.
But for the most part, in my view, and correct me if I'm wrong, those businesses were established before this project moved in their backyard. It wasn't like these businesses came and smelled this odor and then bought their property and then they want it fixed. These businesses were there long before the odor was there. And then the city allows this to happen. And then it affects all the businesses that effectively the city developed that park. So, and I don't mean to be mean to the Wellman family by any means. But it, it just seems really unfair to the businesses that this is allowed to go on and not repaired in some fashion. Now, I'm not saying a demand that it be done today, but, you know, there's got to be a, a sight to the end of this problem here. You know, maybe a year or something that, these businesses were there long before this got moved into their backyard. And there's got to be chemicals or something that, that you folks could do to mitigate this, this issue going forward.
Councilor Captain.
Each morning when I'm driving, I see, I think it's a lot more than 200 birds. The building right next to the state police, there's got to be at least 1,000 birds every morning on that roof. I think it's the Child Development Center or something like that. And one day they were up in the air. You could barely see, you, you, I couldn't believe how many birds. It was literally like the movie. There were so many birds. And I was just hoping that I wouldn't be a target-
It's a constant problem. It's been a problem for, for years now. I mean, it-
So, so I, I certainly hear that, your concerns. The, the, where I sit right now, today, because this is the first time it's come before at the council since I've been a part of it. So it's the, the first presentation of this. What I don't know, and it's not on the agenda anyway for action, but what I don't know is what, what options do we have, if any, as a council to do anything? I, I just don't know. And I'm not saying we can't, but I don't know what those, what those options are. So that, for me, that's one of the takeaways is, is there anything that we can do? Is it a DEP issue? And I understand your concerns. I just don't know what, what's within our, our purview in terms of what, what options we have. So that's the place that I leave today, wondering what those options might be now that the issue's been raised, but.
Yeah, now that the issue's in front of all of you, maybe somebody can spearhead looking into what you could actually do for us up there.
Well, I, I think that looking at, is there an ordinance within the industrial park that specifically covers odors?
Right, that could be.
And health, safety issues as well as if there are rats taking-
Rats the size of cats I have killed, just to let you know.
Yeah, there, there's rats at our transfer station too, so it's right there too.
So anyways, I mean, I, I just say that in terms of, I think that's, that's, if, if there's any action, that's the next action, is to get information, to have a review of, of those ordinances, whatever it might be. We, we're not taking any action tonight. And if this is going to go forward, we need more information to know what's within our, our purview around that. And that's taking into consideration the concerns and moving forward from there.
Okay. And may I just add, as a sponsor, that's really what I wanted, was to bring this before this council. Maybe we could ask the city manager to look into what options are there for the city? And make a plan going forward, if you could maybe, and I'm, I can't speak for everyone here, but perhaps we could ask the city manager to look into this, the part that I found here. I don't know if it's truthful, not truthful. You can get anything you want on the internet. But, you know, let's, let's give due time to this, the Wellman family to, to try and seriously address this issue. But there needs to be an action beyond that because it sounds like that, that hasn't been done before. So what options do we have as a city?
I'll do that.
All right, thank you. So, councilors, question for all of you. This has obviously been a very long meeting. I know we have at least one item that requires attention, the emergency vehicle repair. Absolutely needs to be discussed. Is there, other individuals on this council have sponsored some items. Is there an interest in tabling the other items and making them part of the first agenda items for, for the next meeting? So I'll just raise that for you at this point, if you want to propose that or if you feel like you want to get into a discussion about any of the other items. I'll raise that as, as a question at this point.
I'd like to table the charter commission until next month.
And I'm happy to table the discussion to create the workshop. I think that'll be quick, but it also doesn't need to happen tonight.
Thank you all.
Are we okay tabling the executive session until, I think that's an item that can wait? It doesn't need immediate action.
You'll need to take votes on all three days.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just trying to get a sense of-
My sense is either, either a break or, and fight forward, or I could go either way. But perhaps a break might refresh people, but I'll go either way.
I'd rather just get done with whatever we're going to do than take a break. But I'm happy to table those things.
And then, and then the only other item that would be the, the Public Works Director, the winner stipend, table that until next time. And so the proposal would be to ta, to table 17, 19, 20, and 21. And then we will hear 18.
I'll make it, I can make your motion.
I'd be okay with doing 17 just because Lisa's waited this long and then table the other ones?
Well, I'm going to be here next month, so either really which way at this point.
Okay, okay.
But thank you.
She got so, she got so close to the podium and then we made her sit back down. But that's fine. Then we can table those all.
So.
Go ahead, make your motion.
Wait, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of tabling? Unanimous. So we'll table 17, 19, 20, 21, and take up the last item, which is the emergency, emergency vehicle repair.
Okay, I just have one request. I need to be at the beginning of the agenda next month.
Yes. Out of fairness, all of the items that are tabled, they, they should be our first old business items so that we give-
Well, with the exception of the executive.
Well, except, yeah, good point. That will still be last.
Okay, thank you. Lisa's Public Works Director. I'll try to make this as quick as possible. Thursday night, right before our lovely storm we got, we found out that one of our trucks had an oil leak at the end of the night. The guys were going to come in and stay late to try to get the truck working so that we could use it Friday because at this point in time, we have no spare plow trucks. We have two trucks that we've had approved. They're in the process of either being built or being fitted up at H.P. Fairfield. But neither one of those trucks is here yet, so right now we have exactly the number of trucks that we need to plow all the roads we have. That being said, when they went to go get the part to fix the problem, they talked to Mr. Caldwell because he happened to be at the shop still. And he said that, well, while I understand what you want to do, he goes, it takes me 22 hours to do it and I've done a bunch of them. That's when the boy said, okay, we will leave it to you and we will be down a plow truck for the storm. So Mr. Caldwell has had the truck since Thursday evening and he's been tearing it apart. He worked on it Friday and then again today.
There's going to be another shoe that drops here.
What's that?
There's going to be another shoe that drops here, isn't there?
Well, I'm just explaining. So originally, his estimate, when we talked to him, or when I talked to him Friday, was somewhere in the $12,000 range, which would put it within Glenn's purview or his approval level. He called me this afternoon and he said that basically, as he's been taking the engine apart to get to the oil cooler housing, which is the problem, or was, is the problem. He also found that our EGR cooler and the turbo is rotted. And then some exhaust manifold issues. When he told me all this, it basically comes out to we are at that $15,000 threshold. He's still in the process of tearing it apart, part of those 22 hours he's talking about.
Tell him to stop.
So like, what?
Tell him to stop.
I don't, I need the truck. So anyway, I don't have an exact dollar amount because he is still determining that exact dollar amount. It could be less than 15, it could be 14,995. It could be 17,995. Since we had this meeting tonight and he called me and we're in the process of fixing it right now, I wanted to come to you and ask for approval for up to, I'm going to go high, hopefully really high, like 20 grand in the hopes that it comes in at 14. But since we're here, having the conversation, I figured we would get the approval if possible.
So you need it. You can't get by without it.
Correct.
Councilor Hamilton.
What, what year is the truck? How many miles on the truck? How many hours on the truck? What's the value of the truck?
It is a 2014, so it's one of our newer old trucks. It has 26,000 miles on it, so not that many.
Plow miles?
Huh?
Plow miles?
Plow miles, yes. Um, that truck is primarily used in the winter. It's one of the ones that has a lesser rotation in the summer. So it's one of the ones that we were hoping to keep for a while. And it's a year, mile, what was the other thing? Hours? Oh, God, that could be a lot of hours.
Model, tandem axle, single axle?
It's a single axle with a stainless steel doall body on it. Again, it's one of the newer ones. It's in good shape structurally for the most part. And it's one that we plan to keep in. It's not on the list to be replaced for another three or four years, I think, in our rotation.
How much money's been spent on the truck thus far?
Not much. That truck has not had a lot of work. It's actually been one of our, our workhorses for the last few years. Plow workhorses. It's the one that rides up and down High Street here.
What did the city pay for it?
That was before me. 160-something, I'd be my guess, some guessing, just before my time.
You can't replace it for under 150.
Oh, we can't replace it for like under 170.
Can't replace it, period.
For a year and a half.
And if you don't have it, we can't plow the road.
Right. We, I mean, we ended up doing one of our plow routes this, this past storm on Friday with a, a one-ton truck instead of a bigger truck.
That works good.
That's a, right, and a pickup. I mean, we have backup options and we obviously are going to do what we got to do, but we, we really do need the truck.
I would move to approve 20,000, up to $20,000 to fix the truck.
So I can- We have a motion second. Any further discussion?
Out of what fund?
Oh, I'm sorry. It'll come out of the Highway Department Vehicle Maintenance Fund. Plenty of money. We're good.
Out of the-
I mean, I don't mean that.
With the money to come out of the-
Highway Department.
Highway Department.
Vehicle.
Vehicle Maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah.
I'd just like to say one thing. I know it never comes at a good time. And I know that $20,000 is a lot of money. However, if the truck hasn't had a lot of consistent problems, you can burn up $20,000 real easy in about any repair today. And so, having said that, it, it may sound mean, but it, it, it doesn't sound as mean as what I've experienced.
All right, we have a motion to seconds. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Unanimous.